No, I don't.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be fine in just a minute.
Let me make sure.
Okay. 7:02. I'd like to call the planning board special meeting to order. Tell a roll call, please.
John Derkinderen.
Jamie Lowery.
Marty Kane.
Tom McGinn.
Ted Ridgway Planner.
Antarctic Board Secretary.
Roger Moore Chairman. On the zoning ordinance modifications tonight, we have DB2 district discussion with action, residential development policy adopted by the comprehensive plan review committee at April 1st, 2014 meeting. Item 2, townhouse corner district discussion with action, proposed changes to the district. Item 3, associated conditional use for inclusion in section 8 of the ordinance. And work schedule for the next public hearing and then set a zoning workshop date. Start off, Mr. Ridgway.
Oh, yeah. To start off, at the, at the April 1st meeting, which was Tuesday, I had prepared for the comprehensive plan committee meeting, the compendium of the DB2 uses which they had asked for, along with the table that had originally been approved by the planning board on Thursday night.
That was the option one, right?
It was the option one, included all the items of option one and changes to the land use which included residential uses as a permitted use with no restrictions. At that meeting, I was met with several proposals that basically, the discussion was that, well, you can watch the meeting yourself, but the discussion basically went as follows, that the com-plan committee was confused by the planning board action because they had approved the M1 district and M2 districts to basically, the M2 district in particular, which is the DB1, DB2 district, to, to have no requirement, or actually to have an exclusion of residential except for, you know, the right of individual property owners who had a lot of record as of the date of incorporation of this ordinance would have the right to have one lot, you know, one, they could have one single family residence, which is pretty much what they had passed previously in response to the planning board. So when they saw this, they asked, "What happened?" It was a complete reversal. And they were reminded that the board, that the committee had approved that, but still had mandated, the planning board still talked to the property owners. And they explained that the property owners had, you know, come back fairly strongly about wanting to retain, you know, rights, including rights to, you know, for future development and for financial need. So they had basically maybe carried on the discussion, and there's, there's a contention in there, very strong economic development advocates that said we should return back to the original as it had been approved and that the planning board should reconsider its, its, its approach to this. What happened was a compromise, essentially. The compromise was basically the one that I sent you. We all have copies of that, I believe. You don't have copies of that?
Yeah.
It was emailed.
It was emailed. It was emailed. Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't print that one out. The only thing I didn't print out. Okay. You got a copy? I don't even have it out. No? Well, it was emailed. You won't find it in this package because I didn't print it. Okay.
Let's print it, so.
All right, I'll go print it.
I have it right here.
I've got one too, Ted.
You got one?
Yeah, I got them right here. You see it, John?
It was included in the memo that I sent you.
You're referring to this paragraph right here.
Yeah, that paragraph. That was there.
You see that?
Yeah, I've got that one. I've got that one.
Okay. So, does anybody not, Marty has that?
Marty's got it.
This paragraph right here.
Marty can have mine.
One? Two? Okay.
You got that?
Yeah.
You got that, Marty?
What?
The paragraph. With a different font. Basically what?
This one.
That's what basically the minority said the other night.
So you mean option three? Yeah. Yeah, it's almost exact, right?
That's minority. Were you looking at the other night? Were you looking at the option three on the night?
No. What the, the recommendation was, that statement from the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Is very close to the option three that we were discussing at the previous meeting. That was, that was not supported by the board.
Minority. Are you talking to him? He's lost the hell.
In the minutes you're gonna have to, your game's exploited.
For a while, I'll be watching like the, you know, the town meeting or planning board meeting, came on, came on the court table. I'll just be sitting with you, a lull like this, I'll just sit there. And my wife will walk in the room, she'll watch you. I thought you, didn't much people sit there today. I can read you something, read you nothing. Ow!
Yeah, it's exciting.
It's getting any, any minute now.
Doesn't get any more exciting than now.
No, it's exciting stuff.
It's a suspense before the action.
Yeah. The action coming up. Actually. Stay tuned.
Good try.
Land structure is for four hundred.
We back again?
Yes. Yeah. We get. I don't have a staple kit going, I just, we need one. Marty, you have one?
Tom needs one.
All staff, yes. Everybody needs one. Well, maybe they'll.
I got mine.
You got yours? Tom needs one?
I printed it out already.
I did?
Yeah.
And you got yours?
I mean, that's enough paper.
Yeah, it's kinda confusing, you know, either this one or this one.
They look the same, but the dates are different.
Yes.
I think you should print, update the different color version, you know.
That's a good idea. Could you reprint this? It's in color.
Okay, we're back.
How about plenty more blood?
So.
Or either that or just trying to put the date, you know, different color so it can be noticeable, because they all look the same. Yeah, that's the problem with the alphabet, it doesn't.
Right. Only 26 letters involved.
No, I'm talking about the date. Can I?
So what we're saying, this is the day after, this is the day after the availability.
Right, yeah, so.
Compromise.
Forward.
So, basically, what, what they said, the reading in the record is, is basically the compromise that the committee came up with was, they wrote this, "The DB2 district will permit small, medium, and large, 100,000 square foot scaled wholesale, retail, office, and service areas as well as community uses and low impact manufacturing. Residential uses both single and multifamily that are part of a mixed-use project will be permitted. In addition, single-family dwellings will be permitted, but new residential subdivisions as defined by statute will be excluded. Those residential uses that are part of a mixed-use project will qualify for inclusion in an incentive plan linking residential density to parcel area dedicated commercial uses, thus encouraging a greater proportion of commercial development than residential." So that's what they're, that's what they approved going in, going into the com-plan for the DB2 district. And this is the uses. If you remember that section of the com-plan, it's divided into uses and then design criteria. So this is, this is basically the uses. And it was pretty specific in saying that, and I, I hope I explained it, the statutory residential subdivision is the safety, is one of the main safety valves. What it basically says is that the, remember statutory residential subdivision that we know of is three lots of more. And that is what you, you regulate.
Statutory, you need state, right?
State, yeah. And Tom, Dan looks already.
And town defined.
And town defined. It's both defined in the town and also in the state statute, but Tom wanted it state. He just, they have to amend it because he just emailed that to me and said, "Include this," to make it clear. And that's okay. But, you know, so in other words, incremental divisions, meaning, you know, I'm gonna cut off a lot every five years, that's permitted, and family, family subdivisions or family divisions are permitted. So that does obviously the immediate benefit of ensuring that you can have residential in your property. And it's funny because I talked to, I've spent half the day talking to people who have called up about this, this whole issue. Talked to another landowner who was never, ever able to come to any of the meetings, talked to him for about an hour and a half about, about all these issues. And his concern, which I was surprised about, he says, "Yes, we wanna build a, you know, we wanna expand our business, you know, he's gonna be benefited by the DB2." But he says, "At the same time, I've got a parcel next door that I wanna actually build a retirement home on next to my business, you know, and it's in the woods and it's a nice place and so forth." "Will you prevent me from doing that?" I said, "Well, the com-plan committee has just put this room, you know, this, this provision in there, and if the planning board, you know, follows along with it, yeah, you will be able to." So that shows where.
He would be able to, not prevent it from.
He would be able to, because he would do a division. I said, "Now, if you wanna do a subdivision back there, that's a different story." You know? Depending whatever system the planning board comes up with, you know, if you did a commercial, you know, mixed use, you know, commercial residential mixed-use development, you know, it wouldn't matter how many residents that you put in there, but if you wanted to just make it residential, you would have to, have to do it by incremental or by kind of division. He said, "Well, that's all right, because I want a division for family." "Sounds like we don't have a problem, assuming the planning board follows along with this."
And really, that was a major feedback from the public input we had, too. People wanted the option of being able to split off a lot or two, either for family or for financial gain or whatever. Nobody was talking about subdivision.
Well, nobody that you talked to.
No, nobody at the.
At the meeting.
Now, I have, you know, I have been talking to another property owner who has a, out-of-state property, who has launched parcel land, key parcel land, and she was talking about, "I wanna be able to subdivide." And I said, "Well, you, sorry." Even under, even under the, the new provision, we talked about it, we had to go through the whole history. Even, even under that, you're gonna have to do the commercial. If you wanna, if you wanna make it a commercial residential subdivision, you're gonna have to include it as part of a mixed-use project.
That shouldn't even, that shouldn't be so hard anyway.
It shouldn't be so hard. She said, "Well, what if I can't do that?" This isn't what we can. It's just a question of doing the right kind of project. It's gonna attract those kind of commercial development. You know, but it all depends on, on what the planning board decides on, what he, which mechanism, which mechanism we wanna use. And assuming the planning board wants to do that, I mean, as, as I told Roger today, and, and I wasn't being facetious when I talked about, you know, what the options that you have, option two wasn't being facetious, it was basically saying, "Okay, you know, if, if the planning board really wants to stick with, you know, the, the option one that was adopted, then say, we're gonna hold off on the DB2, we're gonna go in the conference with the com-plan committee and work this out, you know, in some other way. And we'll just do it this next year, or we'll do it by special town meeting or referendum in November, we have a November election coming, you know, if they wanna do it then, fine." But I wasn't kidding when I said that, that is an option that you have if this committee feels very strongly that we wanna maintain the ability to develop any property in there fully residential, you know, in a residential, a commercial residential subdivision or a statutory residential subdivision. So that is your option. And, and I'm not presuming that the board's decided either way. We have the option of, of making the amendment and the changes, or we have the option of saying, "Okay, we'll slow down, back off and, and wait till November or wait till, you know, until after we work it out with, with the com-plan committee." Because the irony is, the com-plan committee at this point isn't, isn't, has, has made their decision. They have to have one more meeting, unfortunately, because they, they, when I compiled it in ready, you know, in warrant format, I found a lot of references in other sections of the com-plan to the, to those, those particular zones that have been deleted. So, and there's a couple of other things that have to be changed in the com-plan to reflect exactly what's being said in this, this amendment, because there's policies that talk about, "No buildings over 15,000 square feet in this zone." Well, that's completely contradictory to what was just written, you know, prior to that. So we have to make some more, what I would call house cleanup changes. So, you know, the com-plan committee will meet one more time to take care of those houses. I've already outlined them, I've already made, made strike throughs and so forth, that's what I did yesterday for you. So they have to meet one more time, I mean, whether or not this board wants to have a meeting with them at that time and see if they're gonna change it again. I mean, that's, that's your prerogative of whether or not the, the chairman of the com-plan committee wants to entertain that. But I'm just saying that you have those two options to go with, and it's up to you at this point to decide which one you wanna go with.
What are your thoughts, John? I'll start with you first.
Well, as Marty pointed out earlier, the, what the comprehensive plan committee has written here is almost a mirror of an option that nearly passed at a previous meeting, which was option three that the board considered, that had, what was it, it was supported by the three of four, I think it was, for option three or something like that, anyway.
It was a three to four vote.
Right. It, it was not supported by the board, but it was close. And it seems like if we adopt that option instead of the option that the board did adopt, so if we change that, it would satisfy what the comprehensive plan is asking for. To me, that would be a simple change to make, and so I, I guess that's how I feel. But then I was in that minority, and I still support option three.
And I, I mean, I concur with John in that, you know, this probably opens it up a little more where you've got the, instead of just a single lot that was proposed in one of the earlier DB2 proposals, this is all you could do, it opens it up for a little more division by an individual or a family that is looking to do that, whereas still emphasizing and prioritizing the commercial aspects and commercial development in the zone. So, I mean, to me, I think, I think this was a good, good compromise that came back from the com-plan committee. And I'll, other than a couple of things that I, you know, just would wanna clarify with Ted's commentary below the italic stuff, you know, I support, you know, what's here in italics.
Marty?
Along that lines, I think if we, if I recall from the number three, we also put a date, or we were using date sets along there.
We were thinking about it, yeah.
How does this date, how would that date set affect if it's what the comprehensive plan has? Or are we just leaving date sets out?
I don't know what you mean by date set.
I think he means date sensitive is when this.
Yeah.
When they would have to exercise that option of either building, we were talking about that, we give two years or five years or whatever.
This has nothing to do with.
They didn't, they didn't address it.
They didn't address it. We're wide open.
So this would be going to affect the media, right?
Yeah, I mentioned, I mentioned, when they were asking for the options, I mean, I gave them a copy of the options because they asked for it. I said, "Okay, here are the options." And, and they said, "Well, you know, and they said, 'We heard about the date.'" And I mentioned, you know, the, the date. Basically, it's a, it's a sunset. And they said, "No sunsets." They didn't like that idea at all. That was, that was, you know, and I think they recognized, as we all really do recognize, you know, plans five years, you know.
But we don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah, we don't have a crystal ball. Five years might be a limitation that is a, is a burden to, to a property owner. There was one property owner here at that workshop who said, "I don't know when I'm gonna need it, 10 years or five years or whatever." And the, the date exclusion would have made that a real difficult problem, because obviously that would not have met their needs. So if that had not met their needs, and, you know, it's, it's a problem to have a sunset like that. So, and the com-plan committee didn't even like it, so it didn't get any, any traction whatsoever.
What about you, Tom?
Well, I was in the majority, I was probably along with the rest, probably the most vocal against residential, so, but.
The ends are in favor, I suppose.
I'm sorry, in favor, thank you.
Yeah, please.
But my main reason why isn't, isn't, I, I like this a lot. In fact, that all along, I, I, this is what I was thinking, but I think when the depth went quarter mile deep, all of a sudden it seemed like we're taking maybe some, too much property away from what could be prime residential area. And I don't know if we make it commercial, if that, if a commercial development will ever go that deep without a lot of infrastructure to, to support it. But we could have some residential properties back there easily. So someone who has property back there is, is, will be stuck in limbo. It's not, it's, it might be 20 years before, before there's an infrastructure where they can get return on their, on their property. Might be able to put their, their few houses there for their family, but they, they won't be able to, it'd be, I, I think the land property could be less valuable for that, that limbo period. So that's kind of my concern. The comprehensive plan, I don't think they're looking at, at the zone boundaries, they just look at part of the concepts where, where, that's what, all of a sudden, when it, when it went that deep, twice as deep as what we first started with, it made me feel like that's like too much, too much rights.
I'm a little confused though, because you said you liked this, but it sounds like you're.
Well, I like it for, for maybe 1,000 feet deep, but to be, we might be quarter mile deep and, or, I don't know, how far back, somewhere that's going might be.
We go up to half a mile.
Half a mile, and, and, and how likely is it that, how long will it be before that property?
Yeah, but this, the suggestion from comprehensive plan is not prohibiting residential development, just prohibiting a development, a commercial development, it's not prohibiting individual residences.
Right, but if someone, someone owns 20 acres, you know, a few 20 acre lots back there, if it was my property, I'd be looking at subdivision, that, that's where the, the most value would be. That might be why some are holding on to it, they're figuring thoroughly, that's their nest egg, and they say, "No, you can only do commercial." And how sellable is that?
Well, it doesn't say that. What are you talking, if I may? Subdivision, if you do a subdivision, you have to, the developer has to be able to put in roads and everything else.
Yeah.
Okay? And most of these properties, as you see back here, they don't have the ability or wanting to even put a subdivision in because of the means of the expense.
But, but really, it doesn't prohibit subdivision per se, it just prohibits pure subdivision.
Well, on a larger scale, it's something.
Right, right. So if you wanna do a subdivision with a commercial component, you can still do that.
Yeah, remember, what if. You're half a mile in the woods, though. How viable is that commercial? We're really talking industrial park, it's kind of what I'm envisioning. And I, I'm not saying that in any good or bad way, but I think a commercial, as in retail or, or sales, is commercial where more industrial is, is manufacturing or places to go and work. So it could be some, a, a manufacturing facility back there, but how long will it be before someone's gonna put that half mile road in for a manufacturing plant? No, no more likely or less likely than, than a residential property. There are ways in, there are, there are different ways in. I live along Route 1, if someone wanted to buy me out, they can use my access to, to get there. So there, there are ways to get in there for something that could be a couple million dollar project, it'd be worth putting in road. But I could, I mean, I can very easily with, with this concept envision a, what you might consider a lighter scale commercial, you know, more from a, an office complex, medical type situation towards the front of the zone, closer to Route 1, you know, served by a road with the associated infrastructure, and then, you know, as you transition out of that and you get farther back to the, the farther areas away from Route 1, transition it into residential very easily. You know, because you've already got the, the infrastructure, you've probably, a developer would, would have spent most of their money to get the, the infrastructure back in for the higher returning values, which over the commercial, and then they can take that and expand upon it to serve adjoining residential use. And, and that type of light commercial, I don't see, lighter commercial or office isn't as, you know, as confrontational, for lack of a better word, between the business and the residential community.
What type of residential are you talking about, David?
It's equal family.
One or two or three.
Multi. Yeah, multifamily.
One, one.
No, you, from what I've read of this, you could, it would be on a scale dependent on the, the amount of commercial that went in or non-residential that went in up towards the front in that example.
It could be proportionate to the commercial.
Right.
What's, what's the proportion we're talking about?
Well, that's, that's, you gotta work out. That's the, that's the detail. That's the soup and the nuts of this stuff.
That's the devil, that's the devil, and he shall appear.
Right. So what I think, I mean, and Roger, it, or, sorry, Tom, I don't wanna take your floor.
No, no, I, I just, I just throwing it out for discussion, just letting you know where I'm standing. I'm, I'm not opposed to this, but, but I think it's, it's going too far back.
So what I would think as a group tonight, because, I mean, really, we need to get more information from Ted to have that option three set in front of us. I don't have that with me tonight.
I can take it.
But, all right, so are we gonna, you know, would it be our intent tonight?
I think we have to jerk out these guys, I'm out of time.
Okay. And that's what I'm wondering, if this was something we needed to get into the details tonight, or we needed to.
Either we do it, either we get into the details tonight, or else, understand this, you have five applications next week.
Yeah, okay.
We're not gonna do anything next week.
Yeah.
We have five applications.
We only have two meetings after that.
Yeah, two meetings after that, and I gotta, I gotta real, I've got a moving deadline, and you notice my little list there of conditional uses that have gotta be written if this thing functions. Otherwise, it's gonna be.
Do you want option three for a copy?
Yeah, if you want. I'm sorry.
There wasn't a great deal of difference between option one and option three, because that's, some of you guys are going either way.
Yeah, I, I mean, me personally, I liked option three. I agreed to proceed in the discussion with option one because of the simplicity of enforcing and, and understanding.
Yeah.
But, you know, I dissented ultimately because I didn't like some of the provisions that were included, but that's the way it goes. So I, I did like the concept of option three. I thought it was good, I thought it, it, like I mentioned a minute ago, had that priority of commercial. And then if you, you know, you made the investment in commercial, you've got that original parcel, and that really.
you've got that original parcel. And, and that really is the biggest thing that I see as the administrative challenge is keeping track of that original parcel.
Option one sort of solved that.
Right, right. Where that's gonna be the big, the big issue that somebody's gonna have twenty years from now if the zone is still the same and, and they've developed some commercial upfront is going back and, and convincing a planner and a planning board to say, hey, guys, don't forget, this was my land upfront originally in, in 2014. And now I've got the right to do the, the residential behind it, even though it wasn't done at the same, in the same timeframe.
And from a planning board's standpoint, since we do very thorough notice of decisions, findings, facts, that would be a finding of fact.
Right.
At, at this time, you know, given this, this project, this person is at, you know, has X number of units at X number of, you know, acres available. So that would always be in a file. It would always be in a digital record, be a paper file. It would make it automatically, um...
Yeah, because I can see how the development will go, is that somebody will subdivide, commercially subdivide or, or split off a front portion of a lot, retain a back portion, and the front will go to some other entity. And they'll manage it and own it for years, and then the back entity will decide, hey, I'd like to do something. You know, the original entity.
Ideally, under my world, I would love to see one of the chairman's come and say, yes, let's do the Great American Neighborhood here with commercial. I can assemble these lots, and I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna do a planned community here. And that's obviously the ultimate, because it's all planned at once. That, that would be what we like. That's not how it's gonna happen. But, you know, we have given thoughts to the, the financial, you know, to, to the administrative perspective of keeping track as we go, so nobody loses their rights. And at the same time, the town doesn't lose track of, you know, what those, you know, what percentages are owed.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we do that as a plan, as a complete plan anyway?
My gut feeling, though, is, is...
Even though it could be amended later, you know, the retained lots could be amended later, but it would be a complete plan that would say, this is the commercial, this is gonna be split up into lots X, Y, and Z. You could always amend it, but at least that's the plan.
Yeah. Well, you know, certainly that, 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 that would, I mean, if you did a sketch plan of that, certainly that would be. But if somebody comes in and says, I just wanna carve off, I have, I have a Duncan Dome, so once you come in, I'm gonna carve off an acre of land. They're not gonna do a master plan of a forty acre parcel. They're not gonna do that. And I think that would be onerous for us to do that, suggest that, you know. However, if they come in with, you know, something all along the front or this front portion, then it might be, you know, it might be part of our review process where we said, well, give us a sketch of what you're thinking of the back. We're not holding you to it, but, you know, we have a record, what, what you're thinking in terms of future commercial development or future residential development. We'll have a record.
And if they did something that required a submission to the Registry of Deeds or filing at the Registry of Deeds, then you can work with whoever to make sure, or...
Put it on the plan.
Right, so you're right on a plan.
You're talking about providing that future access, so, for, for back...
Well, it could be.
We were talking about actually preserving the rights. The rights to, uh, let's say residential. If I put commercial up front, I got residential rights. You know, the big, the big question, the challenge for the planning board is somebody comes in and says, I wanna do residential. You know, I promise to do commercial later. You know, that's where, that's where it's gonna get tough. That's where you say, no, you gotta have the commercial. You can do your, you can do your fallback of doing a split. You can do your incremental subdivision. You can do your family division. But, you know, no, not... You can't appoint a multifamily and then say, well, some future date, I'm gonna put a congregant care facility up front. I've been, I've been stoked by that one before.
No, and that's where, that's where if something like this were to go through, the code enforcement officer's gonna, we're gonna have to have the language, and the code enforcement officer's gonna have to be able to enforce it to say, okay, you've got, you know, hundred, fifty thousand square feet of commercial upfront that entitles you to however many square feet of residential somewhere else.
So that's, that's one way to do it. And I, I just wanted to address something quickly about what, what Tom is talking about in depth. Tom, when I, when we drew this line, though, if you have to remember, the line keeps changing.
All the lines the same. It's been pretty much fixed for all of them.
It used to be along the property lines.
Well, it, it is. These are property lines. These are property lines up to here. So what these are is you've got, you've got properties here that are in, um, that, these are within reasonable striking distance of Old Post Road, which is a residential subdivision. So this is the R2 district. And if you see, we've got distances of a quarter mile to a half a mile in some places. And this here goes to the farthest back, Rita Drew here isn't, that isn't a property line. Bentley's wasn't a property line. This is the extent of what he was looking at for a subdivision, for his campground. But most of it goes to back property lines. We have a, we, you know, this is the farthest house in the whole section. This property right here is the farthest house. And all the other ones come to about here. They have chances to expand, but they're still, we're still talking about a great expense in, in, in building road for, for two acre lots, which you'd wanna get, you'd wanna get one acre lots if you could because of the costs of road construction these days. So, you know, in a sense, some of these, like Rita's property here is lay law. And she's gonna have to make a deal to get through one of, one of these places here.
One of her nephew, so she could...
Could. They might, but this is all a ravine here. You know, that's a, that's a tough property. These here could all be, these up in here have potential for, for, so combining. And quite frankly, um, you know, I think they, they, they have access points to get to. Here, you know, it's a little tougher. And, you know, if you're looking at like Rita's property here, she has to go all the way back here to get here. Pauline's gonna go all, I mean, that's a, that's a mile, you know, that's three quarters of a mile of road to get to the very end. If she's got a property here that she can combine with, with Michael's and the town of Arundles, you know, they sell theirs. Shut up. Um, then, uh, you know, you, you could probably combine something and you have access points to Route One. I think there's, there's a lot more potential for developing this from Route One than there is for developing it from here. Going all the way back. I mean, putting in three quarters of a mile of road, you have got to have big lots. Yeah, well, you, you gotta have a lot of, a lot of subdivision. You gotta have a lot of demand to put in that much road. And as we see right now, right now isn't a good barometer because, you know, we have, as you know, Bartlett, two acres. I mean, Bartlett Two, and we have three houses there, forty-five with a potential of fifty. So the demand for that kind of subdivision is not really big right now. And those are one lot. Those are, that's a cluster subdivision.
So there's not only the property owners in the green, but there's also, I'm looking at, I guess that maybe I've been through too many town meetings where, where the questions come up that night. And so this, this has to all sell to the public. And if there's an awful lot of adjacent or surrounding neighbors to what's going on here, and, um, all you need is three or four of them to speak up, and it all starts falling apart. So I'm just looking at, is it gonna pass town vote?
Don't know. Don't know.
If we knew that happened.
If we knew that, if we wouldn't be here, if we knew it was gonna fail, we wouldn't be here talking.
Yeah, I... So the, the property line has changed. We started this, what was it, two years ago, started on this, this rearranging everything. The property line used to be probably about right here.
No, that's, that's, you're talking about the CCS.
The original CCS, that's where it was.
And C1, and C2.
Okay, whatever it is, that...
Right, one thousand feet.
The way it is right now is one thousand feet, which is probably about right here.
No.
Yeah. Thousand feet's probably like, like that five. This is like three fifty or something. It's probably a thousand right about here. So then it went back and it followed this, and now it's, now it's going back to where it's coming close to a residential area right in this area. So what do we, um, three or four feet back right there? So, so it, it has changed, and it's, it's taken...
It hasn't changed. This is proposed to change. It proposes to change.
The line has been changing, and it is, it's, it's a big change. To me, I'm, I'm not comfortable with, with how far back it's gone. And that, that's my, my biggest opposition. Other than that, I like that the commercial requirements, I, I think that makes sense. But, but I didn't know it was gonna be triple the depth of what it is now.
It's not really triple.
Or some, some, yeah, well, the furthest...
The farthest is Bentley's.
Which is quite close to three times, to three thousand feet, twenty-five hundred, two and a half times deeper than what it is now. So, so that, that was too big a leap for me. But, but that's all, that's, that's where I'm coming from. And, you know, I'm probably in the minority tonight. It's kind of, so...
Well, you know, what it does is it, it offers opportunity for those property owners that they don't have right now. Okay? And if we preserve their abilities to still develop, get a return, you know, until the demand rises, then clearly, um, you know, the, uh, they, they have an option. You know, they have an option to, uh, to, to still get a return from their land and, uh, at the same time, get a greater return than they could right now.
Question for you real quick, Ted. Did, did the option two that you proposed the other night, was that the one that, that tied a amount of residential development to a, to the amount of commercial development?
Yeah, that was a floor area one. That, that's basically a forest system.
Floor ratio.
Yeah, it's a floor. We, we call it commercial ratio, commercial floor ratio, a CFR.
Because that's, as I read...
It's, it's the forest.
As I read this italicized paragraph, that's what I had in mind, as of what the Comprehensive Plan Committee was, was more directing us to. Instead of, of this, which in a lot of ways would allow a development, a hundred percent residential on a three acre lot.
Yeah, they didn't like that. They, they, they wanna kind of mandate...
But that's what this does.
Yeah, well, no, what, this one?
Yeah, this one does.
Yeah, that's why, John, I might have to disagree with you. That, that was not an adoption of three.
No, I didn't say an adoption. It was close. No, if you read, if you read what is written here in italics for the Comprehensive Plan, it would permit a completely residential development, just not a subdivision. It does not prohibit residential development.
No, but this, you know, option three would allow a residential subdivision.
Yes.
It just...
How, how do you see that?
Well, because seventy, if you look at, if you look at twenty-five, less than twenty-five percent of the area dedicated in non-residential use, it goes up to three acres.
Yeah, so you could do a fully residential subdivision. It's just very low density.
Yeah, it's all low density, which doesn't really make it, and you would do a cluster. So, you know, that would reduce your road costs.
Yeah.
But you're not, you're still not gonna get the density you would want for the road costs in that particular area. I mean, it's, it better than want to be very, very exclusive homes.
Right.
Given, you know, the cost per foot for the road and even with, let's say, it's half, half the frontage under a cluster. So that would be a hundred foot, hundred foot frontage.
I see that. I agree with that. So that would need to be amended. Is there anything else that, that conflicts there?
Well, I mean, where the options were, amend DV two with, on the, on the second page of Ted's memo. Amend DV two with option two or three. Do you mind printing option two?
But option two was the one with all the square...
Why don't you get the whole thing, the whole smash?
But if you look at that...
You want one, two, three, Anne?
No, I don't want one, two, one, two.
Just, no, you just...
I already did three. I'll go get two.
All right, do two. Do two.
Thank you, Anne, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I can print it out up here.
No.
All right, sure.
I just think it'd be helpful for us to have both in front of us.
All of it, right.
And you know what? I hate to dig this, but there's an option four that's not the PMD. That's, that would be what, what we did in DV one.
Right.
We, yeah, we talked about that.
Which is?
Basically, DV one said you can have as much residential as you want, which is, you gotta have fifty-one percent commercial. That's another option.
Yeah, well, I guess when I was reading that...
Out of three hundred fifty foot.
But look, look at...
Your setbacks, three hundred fifty feet, it's, you, you, it's kind of hard to turn around and put a residential in a business zone if you turn around, uh, only three hundred fifty feet.
Well, no, remember, we were looking at going vertical. We were looking at vertical stratification there, if you remember.
Uh, getting back to...
Which a lot of people are asking, can I put a house, can I put a residence over my business?
Yeah, of course you can. Getting back to that option two, which is square footage, and option three, which is lot size. If you look at the next to the last sentence of the italicized information from the Comprehensive Plan, it says incentive plan linking residential density to parcel area dedicated to commercial uses. So it does, it does talk about parcel area, uh, footprints.
Those residential that are part of mixed use.
Right.
Encouraging a great proportion of commercial development than residential. So nothing in here encourages any commercial versus residential.
Right.
Other than limiting what you can do from residential. It doesn't say on parcel sixteen up there that the owner has to do any commercial in order to do residential.
Right.
Which is sort of what I've read through this, is that...
But you don't, no. This, this says you can do residential without commercial.
Residential uses, both single and multifamily, that are part of a mixed use project will be permitted.
Right. In addition, single family growing will be permitted, but new residential subdivisions will be excluded.
Sure.
So you can do, you can do residential. You can do some residential development, but can't do subdivision.
Yeah, it's just a single thing.
Um, right. But, yeah.
It looks not the same one as before. I just got... Oh, no, these aren't.
Option two and a...
Go back a little bit.
Oh, that's, that one, oh.
Yeah, the residential uses, i.e. subdivision, multifamily, that are part of a mixed use project will qualify for inclusion in an incentive plan linking residential density to dedicated commercial uses. And, and that's what number three does not do. Number three, number three doesn't link it to any commercial use.
As long as you got the area, you got the acreage, you can do free...
Number two links it to a commercial use.
Do, question, do we have to even go with one of these options? So, I mean, because right now...
Okay, but if we don't go with one of these options, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be on the warrant.
It's not gonna be on the warrant.
Or if we come up with something else very soon, it's not gonna be on the warrant.
Because I think these options are gonna get more confusing than if you try to leave it as the Comprehensive Plan has stated.
Well, but I, I, we've got to figure out how to put standards in for the Comprehensive Plan's intent.
Yeah, right. They have a very broad, they took a very broad approach to this and said, okay, planning board, you have to, you have to deal with the devil and the details on this and make it work. That's why they could do this in an evening. It's hard for us to get to. We're gonna make this thing work.
My, my reservation, my biggest reservation with option two is that it's, a town meeting is not gonna like it because it's different, it's complicated, it's unusual, it's...
Right. That's what you voiced the first time, and I agree with you.
Yep.
It, it's just, you know, I don't think it's gonna pass muster at town meeting.
So people have problems with ratios. They, they don't have a problem with percentage.
Right.
So maybe we can do the same thing instead of a ratio, do it with a percentage.
Well, or if you have... I mean, what's coming to my head, and I don't know if it's appropriate, you know, from a scale of things realistically, was if you had, you know, were allowed a residential, single residential lot in a subdivision, not, you know, exclusion, exclusive on the subdivision standard, but per ten thousand square feet, just throwing a number out, of commercial floor space you have. So if you had a seventy thousand square foot building, you get seven lots behind you. Just throwing in something different at it.
And what size is the lot?
Whatever. Minimum of one acre. You get seven one acre lots.
So it's a proportion of the four.
Right.
So make it just that simple, period.
I, just, just what, it, it actually really...
That is simplifying this thing.
Yeah, it makes it very, very simple. So it's a different issue.
That's what you're doing with the fifty-one percent.
Yeah. But it's mandating, you know, in either, either case, yeah. I mean, either case, what the, what the Compliment Committee says, you shall still mandate mixed use, period. They said you shall, they, they've blown out option two and option three, really, because they've said it shall be mixed use. It shall be commercial and residential, except for...
It shall be commercial and residential, except for, except for family divisions and incremental divisions.
Except for exemptions to the subdivision or site plan ordinances. Really and truly, if you can go in and just do it by right, you've still got the right to do it. But if you need to come and get a higher level approval, then you've got to tie it into commercial.
Whereas options two and three, as they stand right now, saying, you can always do a residential subdivision.
Right.
Because, you know, it says CFR equals to two or less than one.
Right.
So if you have, zero is less than one. So, oh, excuse me, it's the opposite, three.
Yeah.
It says three point, three point oh one, you know, so if it's, if it would be 250, you know, which would be, let's say, you know, no.
Right.
There's no, there's no commercial, it's still, you're still starting to, oh, no, excuse me, it says no non-residential floor area, so it's four acre. I don't want to do it, I'd do a four acre subdivision. God help me, because that's gonna be awfully expensive to build infrastructure for. But maybe I have a useful.
Right.
Maybe I have guys who want to have their own little, you know, homestead subdivision, or an equestrian subdivision.
And, and the way I see that is our role, from a planning standpoint, is if somebody wants a subdivision like that, I don't think, as, as much respect as I have for somebody's property rights right there, along route one, I think there are better parts of town, more appropriate parts of town to put in that type of subdivision.
Basically, you have, we have twenty-three, twenty-two more square miles for you to fit that in.
Right.
Yeah, but if you don't have to own that.
Well, that is, but that's always the problem, isn't it, John, and Tony? I mean, you know, Tom says that, Tom was saying that on Tuesday night, he says, zoning is restricted by nature. It's all zoning. If you have zoning, you are restricting people's rights of their property. You're saying you can't do this, this, and this. I can't put a smelting operation on my two acre residential subdivision lot. And that's what zoning does. It restricts property, it restricts unlimited use of your property. So if we're gonna have zoning, we're gonna recognize there's well use restrictions on property.
So both two and three will actually allow, although not economically feasible necessarily, but will both allow, as they stand now, residential subdivision.
With no commercial.
With no commercial.
Right. What's the largest fossil that we're talking about there?
Fifty, fifty-two acres, I believe.
But the comprehensive plan had suggested that those kinds of subdivisions, residential subdivisions, not be permitted under any condition. So that would have to be specified.
Residential subdivision, it has to be, it has to be a mixed use project.
Right, so that would have to be specified regardless of whether we adopt two or three.
But getting back, what you had mentioned earlier, about the 51%, that makes it acceptable for the comp-
What 51%?
That was, that was his alternative four, which you were saying, yeah, as long as you-
Fifty-one percent is commercial. So if you've got a 50 acre lot, then 51% of that's gotta be commercial. In a way, that's what I do for. Option four was doing.
Yeah.
Option four was doing that, but it was saying that you were doing an automatic PMUD, because you're requiring you do PMUD.
Yeah. Okay, so these are all trying to do that, but all incrementally.
Right.
And just move this process law, if it comes to vote, I'm not gonna object to moving this forward, so I just want to-
I think we're probably all in accord, is this is gonna figure out how to do it.
Seeing as, as how, I mean, what's, what's the real difference between option two and three? One ties it to-
One's percent, and the other one is-
Yeah, the floor space or floor area, and the other is just parcel size.
Right, I mean, really and truly.
Which is easier to administer, I would say, parcel size.
No, floor space. Well, you, the problem is, you don't know what your floor area is of your residence. You're gonna make an assumption that we're gonna have a 1,500 square foot house, or we have a 2,000 square foot.
But that, and that gets tricky and difficult, because you, somebody-
Because it might be in the future.
Well, saying somebody puts up, you know, they can only get a 1,500 square foot house on a parcel, and they put it on there, and five years later, somebody adds on, you know.
Right.
And that's where I was thinking to, to tie it from what's typical in the commercial world, square footage, to what is typical in the residential world, which is lots.
Yeah, but the thing is, okay, you chopping your residential, okay, 1,500 square feet, he can do that anytime he wants. Turn up for the eat, but to try to come back on commercial, you have to come back all the way to back to the front. He just has to go, he just, he just has to go turn on a co enforcement officer, and then-
Oh, no, and somebody very well could decide to, under these, decide to take a piece of land, build a house, as they have by right, without coming to town hall one bit, other than to get a building permit, and then integrating that house into a larger plan that, that satisfied the zoning if they, if they wanted to do commercial and residential.
Actually, I think there may be some advantage to Jamie's suggestion in terms of floor area, sort of the hybrid floor area and then lots, because the, the commercial floor area, you could actually maximize that on a lot. And, you know, the more you put on that, on a relatively small lot, if you really wanted to go that way, the more residential lots you can get out back, so I think that may actually be an advantage here.
Somebody wants the right ratio, isn't it?
Well, the right-
Right, and that's where I was just throwing a number out, and-
I was just trying to figure out, what's the right ratio here?
Well, what, what did you do over here with options?
Three commercial, one residential. If you're developing, if you want, if you're going on to a one to four ratio, if you want a commercial.
But one to four, one to four lots to lots? Or one to four square foot to square foot?
Depends on your, depends on your lot size. Because you need your lot size to turn up with the commercials. You have to turn on, go to your lot size for your, for your floor space.
But-
You aren't gonna turn on, you aren't gonna put in a-
What's the, the zoning there now? It's a two acre?
Well, three acre on the east, on the east side, one acre on the west side.
So compromise at two, I, you know, what we're talking about, I'm trying to figure out what a good ratio would be. So if you, like, if you look at option two, and if you have like a, you know, half of half in terms of floor space, and you figure that your average house is, what, 2,000 square feet or 1,500 square feet, and that would occupy, let's say, two acres, so you put two acres-
To fifteen.
To two thousand? To, yeah, two thousand square.
Two acres is eighty-four thousand square feet.
Well, oh, wait a minute, two lots, so one acre, one lot per.
See some problems there. Well, I like it, but I don't, I'm having problems figuring out where the, what the ratio really should be.
Well, and I think we can-
But that also determine, that also determine, because we don't know back out there, actually, what your soil conditions are.
Yeah, we know what they are, stake.
Where?
It's either wet or stony.
All right, so-
No, it's, it's more wet than stony.
Because we're having trouble with this, and we need to move it along, and we're, because if it isn't clear to us immediately, it's gonna, it's gonna have problems.
Be clear to them.
Right, right, that's what I can try, if, like you were saying, if they don't understand it, it is complicated. And how can you vote to approve something you don't understand?
Right, I wouldn't. So I, I, I think that brings us back to option three, and we need to put in a, a little amendment that doesn't permit the residential subdivision.
Maybe we take out the less than twenty-five percent then.
Well, no, because-
Well, you would start, yeah, you would start-
You would still allow residential, complete residential at less than twenty-five percent, you just don't want a subdivision. So you can still chop off individual pieces and do it incrementally.
But that's gonna be, but that's gonna be able to happen regardless.
Yeah.
Whatever we, whatever we have in any of these conversations and documents, somebody's gonna be able to do that. And it's gonna fly under the radar until they look to do something larger.
Except- We're gonna have to set, we're gonna have to set, quite frankly, upfront, we're gonna have to set what the, what the, the non-subdivided lots or the non-statutory lot size is. We're gonna have to set that.
Yeah.
Say, all right, it's two acres.
Right.
You know, or-
Yep.
And that, that's what you said, and that's the non-statutory lot size, okay, minimum lot size. And then the number, and then you go with your percentage there.
Right.
And we say, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm gonna do a multifamily.
So, so to whoever, was it your, one of you guys made the point of striking the, the less than twenty-five?
Yeah.
That gets rid of the, the option to do a larger scale residential property without any commercial.
But you're gonna keep it at three acres or two?
Well, no.
Well, it would be struck.
You strike that, then you start-
Strike the whole thing out.
Which it's at now anyway.
Okay, I understand, all right.
So then-
Well, remember, it's one acre.
However, I think it needs to be made clear somewhere that the property owner still retains the right to do individual lots.
And that's gonna be in the tape.
Right, somehow that has to be clear.
That has to be in the tape.
Okay, one question along the way, which may be totally out of realm. As we're setting this up, where does the lot sizes also fall into thought down on the townhouse side?
Well, let's, let's drive off that bridge when we get there.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, you, you, I'm saying right here, if you're setting the standard, I mean, uh-
This is only for DV two.
This is only for DV two.
But you're talking about precedent.
To make everything, that's why I'm asking that question now, instead of coming back and going, the cat around the tail again.
Does anybody see a problem if we do scratch that less than twenty-five percent?
No, that means you've got to at least dedicate a quarter of your property-
Right.
-to commercial.
Which is a pretty good start.
Yeah.
I think it should be more.
Change it to thirty-three?
Well, I don't know, Tom probably thinks it should be less, so.
No, no, I mean, let's, 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 why I'm saying this is, because the fact is, when we, when we had the BI district that was supposedly given to us, okay, down there, which is useless, okay, and we're trying to make this for business, and we're coming back to this far, so, and if you're trying to push residential in there, okay, and most of the, the owners along this way here who have already visited us turn out, are more willing to accept the way it's drawn now, so.
I understand what you're saying.
We may talk about percentage this year, so, I mean, is there, is there support for going higher than twenty, twenty-five, more than a quarter?
No, I think twenty-five is fine. Wait, wait a minute, I just dropped that, or that-
No, 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 in terms of the starting point. So instead of starting at twenty-six, starting at thirty or something like that.
Now, one concern I have on the other end of the spectrum, especially with, and granted, if you got up to seventy-six percent, most likely, something to be that intensely developed would have sewer. But I would, I'm, I would be concerned right now at having a threshold with a half acre lot.
Oh, yeah, I would too. Unless, unless you had-
So what I would even set the-
But it still, it still has to be able to work.
You still have to do soil studies. So what I would propose for simplification is to strike out the, the, what should be less than twenty-five line. Go twenty-five or twenty-six to fifty at two acres, fifty-one to six, fifty-one to seventy-five at one and a half acres, and then greater than seventy-five at two acres, or one acre, sorry. So make that, have the three tiers.
Why not, why not a half acre?
Well, you're gonna have to have water and sewer both.
Let's cross that bridge once we have sewer there.
If you're talking non-commercial-
The question is, what if it's a community septic field?
Yeah, you can do it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I'm not as thrilled about community septic fields because they fail.
Right.
That's the only thing that is the problem.
Community septic fields are problematic as community water supply.
Exactly.
Something will always fail at some point.
Something has more than seventy-six percent non-residential is probably gonna have, have a system already engineered.
But remember too, this is just area dedicated for non-residential. This doesn't mean area constructed with non-residential. This is somebody taking a big piece of land and saying, hold on, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dedicate-
Well, are we gonna allow that though?
By what I'm reading, it says you can. I'm gonna take, weird waters, sorry Linda, to use your parcel as an example. I'm gonna take this piece of land, and I'm gonna put in half acre lots right here today and reserve seventy-five percent for non-residential. I promise you, you're gonna get your non-residential. Give me my half acre lots, though.
Oh, we're gonna allow that though? I, I, I thought we were working, like the, you know, what's chicken or the egg, you know? I thought we wouldn't allow the residential to be built unless the commercial was already being built.
By, by this?
Yeah.
How does that, how do you prevent that scenario?
If we adopt straight option three, right, it would not-
No, if you adopt straight option three, it wouldn't, but if you say, what, what we're doing is, we're saying, okay, all right. If we, if we do, if we were to integrate this in what the confluent committee came up with, then it would be, this would be an extra incentive on top of that. So it would say, the confluent committee's saying that it has to be, of course, it doesn't say it primarily has to be commercial. They don't say that.
And I think some of these parcels, you know, they might be much more suited for a larger mix of residential than commercial, but we want to try and encourage that commercial in wherever it's suitable for it.
If we have a nature restricted community, we just assume it's gonna be more residential than commercial.
Would that be considered a commercial property, or is that residential if it's-
Commercial.
Well, it, technically, it is a residential, but I always have considered it to be an economic development tool.
Yeah, so, so, good to allow that, if that's being put in the formula there, then that'll be restricted too.
Okay, so what we need to do, and my suggestion, really, instead of putting point five acres, I would say, ask conditions allowed. You know, whatever you can squeeze in there, and you can justify, you can do.
Isn't that already implied though, you can't, don't let you improve the septic water?
Yeah, but it-
Well, no.
But if you're, if you're gonna-
But we have a density.
But what it gets to is density, John.
It gets the density. It's a question of density, so it's number, if you don't do it by square footage, you do it by unit.
All right, so, so take out the-
Which is what the PMUD does, it does it by unit, not by square.
So Linda decides she's not gonna do a small lot subdivision, she's gonna do an apartment complex right here, and her density is a half acre versus one acre. That's where that gets to be key.
Right.
I mean, especially with not having sewer right up to there.
It doesn't, what kind of apartment house you're gonna develop, yeah, really.
Well, all right, so-
It's business.
I, I see all of that then, that looks good. What, what do we need to-
I'm, I'm not sure we're there yet.
Well, no, no. But we still need to do the, the, the restriction on, where was it now? Oh, yeah, so that, that, the commercial is in place before you get, you can take advantage of the incentive, the residential incentive.
And I like how you, I like the characterization of this table as a residential incentive or bonus, or whatever. No, it's a residential incentive. You get a-
Yeah, all right.
The main focus is commercial, you get a residential incentive if you, if you choose to take it.
Play by the guidelines.
What are you having a problem with, Dave? Going in circles, that's another problem. I guess I'm gonna first set a threshold, and, so we're saying we'll accept up to twenty-six percent, or let's say up to thirty percent. We have a mixed use commercial area, and we're gonna accept a map, we've gotta have a floor. The floor is, you gotta have a floor of X mile of square footage for commercial, or a percentage of area for commercial. You know, what's our- You know, what's our floor? Thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent, you know? Really from a, from a. That, that, you know, it's funny, because in the DB1 district, we have fifty-one percent is our threshold. And it's one acre zone, fifty-one percent, one acre zoning, uh, and you have to do that. You have to have fifty-one percent commercial. Don't care how you do it, you figure it out. If you're doing an apartment complex, it's one unit per acre.
And it's based on floor area, fifty-one percent of, of what?
I believe it's, uh, it's lot area. No, it's floor area, it is floor area, it is a floor, it's a very simple ratio. It's a fifty-one percent floor area to.
Where a lot of the intent is.
Could we call that simple? That's been my thought along, it's making it simple. Give us a moment.
Well, the only problem with that is if we wanted, of course, if we wanted a commercial on one floor and then three floors of residential, can't do it that way. It doesn't work.
Building Caldwell like that.
Would it need to work with that though? Only Caldwell is something.
Well, but, but also, we're looking, we're getting into bigger parcel sizes. Where you're not gonna get, you're not looking for that more intensely, you know, village, you know, urban type of setting, you're looking at, at more of, of a larger scale office park with.
Yeah.
Subdivision, you know, condo type of development behind it, you know, or some kind of, of little more, a little more of a, of a larger scale development, and, and how to get to that point.
I think most likely, if it's gonna be a commercial development that's going back there, it's probably gonna be larger building.
Right.
Why build the road unless you can make it worthwhile?
Well, so I think what we need to decide at this point is, what cutoff, where do we wanna start? Do you wanna start at twenty-six or do we want to start at thirty?
Subteen.
Where do we wanna start this, so that you have a minimum commercial of development?
Minimum residential.
Well, no, the, the commercial, well, the non-residential use. Yeah, I guess I gotta have to say it right. I'd, I'd be alright with all the, all of those percentages except for the first one, you just scratched that. Or even fewer categories.
So, should we set up, like, should we do a?
This is, yeah, tricky.
It is tricky, very tricky.
Um, you know, I'm just trying to think.
Every one of these approaches is gonna pit.
Right, oh, they do, I mean, that's.
Well, where, I, where I like the fifty-one percent is, is understandable.
It's right, it's one number, it's not.
To explain this to town meeting, it, it'll take time.
And it'll cause people confusion.
How will you present that, if you go fifty-one percent commercial, then what can you do residentially?
Forty-nine.
I mean, you can do whatever you want with the remaining.
That's what that would mean.
Except, except, uh, residential subdivision?
That's basically what it is, it says, yeah, if you don't, if you do commercial, you can put in commercial, or you can put in residential, you know, forty-nine percent of that area can be.
And if you don't do commercial, you can't do anything?
That's what it says.
Yeah, I don't like that.
But that's in the DB1, that's in a very general area.
The DB. No, no, we're, we're considering this for the end of the year.
This is the, I'm talking about the DB1, that's where, we already have that in the DB1.
There's no lots available.
DB1.
There's no lots, you have no lots per se available, really, in the DB1, except for that. Lots of ones.
Well, no big lots, so.
So, John. No, we don't have big lots, you're right, it's not a huge.
Well, I mean, you.
It's really, it's really meant for second story stuff, it's meant for, uh, back of the, you know, it's, it's sort of like, I have my residence in the back of my, you know, I have a residence in the back of my, my store, where I, as I've seen it before, many contractors store here, or many contractors have their, you know, their, their, their showroom up front, and then their houses out in the back.
So, if so, by, what's an italic, if we scratch the less than twenty-five percent, you can still build if you, if it's family owned and less than three, so we still, we have that.
Yeah.
That release valve there.
Yeah, that's a relief.
And then, um, I don't know if we need four different categories, it could be.
But, but the kicker is, where do you, when do you get that, as we're saying, this, this residential bonus?
You have to have the commercial before you can.
How much commercial?
You mean how much, you're saying twenty-six percent?
If you have ten thousand square foot, then.
So, but the way this is, the way this reads is dedicated to non-residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, commercial building.
So, it's gotta be.
That has to be there first.
Built out?
Yes.
I would, yeah, we need to specify that.
Or it doesn't have phases.
Could, yeah.
Given phases.
Could be all approved as one, one project, but you can't build the residence first and say later on. I think, I think what we're looking for is the commercial, so, don't, don't allow any residence, don't allow that permit, maybe an occupancy permit until, uh, you know, the.
Or don't even allow the building permit.
No, no building permit, no building permit, until that commercial property is already being built.
And the thing, and the thing is.
Providing you, you get that one option, if you wanna build your own home on that property.
Oh, then you're exempt.
You're exempt, get that, that story out there.
Ted, you need to write some language for that, that we can approve, if we're gonna do this tonight, you know, for the, uh.
Yep, see, the thing, the thing is.
I think if we write it as, that it has to be presented as a plan, that would, right, that includes a commercial? Wouldn't that take care of it?
Yeah, it's, it's going to have to be.
See.
So, Tom, you wanna scratch out that twenty, less than twenty-five?
Because the other, the other thing is, if you have your commercial dedicated, and it starts to build up, you can.
Then you can add more residents later.
No, I'm saying, you may try to find out it's more practical if you're gonna keep it commercial than residential.
That's the property owner's choice.
That's what you're right, yeah.
And it becomes a new point.
Because it's, so you're right, your commercial's there first, and it will snowball.
Right, I.
That's probably what's gonna happen.
I would like to say, I mean, that's the optimist's view of what's gonna happen around here, you're gonna start to get some new commercial in, and it's gonna continue to progress, you're gonna get more and better infrastructure, and then we've got a, a expanded commercial base.
Yeah, so just because on the plan, they may present twenty-six percent non-residential use, and, you know, set it up so that residential's gonna go back, and it's phased, they would have the option of changing that plan. If they wanna go all commercial instead of doing the residential, it doesn't mean that they have to do the residential.
If it is phased, the first phase has to be commercial.
And I, I guess, and I know this is getting, it, it's, the devil is in the details, as it's getting in, does somebody take, in order to circumvent the intent of the ordinance?
Yeah.
Do they take twenty-six percent of their property and say, I'm gonna do a five thousand square foot office building up here on ten acres, and use the other seventy-four for the subdivision they really wanna do?
They could do that, but they need two acre lots, which it is already filled ahead, they wouldn't allow it, yeah. But they'd have to have a.
If that's, I mean, if people are okay with that.
I'm not sure, is that achieving what we wanna achieve?
Right, that's my, that's my concern.
Yeah, that's my concern too.
So, I just did a quick number, and, but, I don't even wanna go there, because it's gonna get, I'm gonna convolute it, and it's never gonna go any farther than this table.
Also, so, maybe that.
Well, if you, if you took a twenty acre parcel, that's roughly eight hundred thousand square feet of land. And we said, you need to do two percent of that is a sixteen thousand square foot commercial facility, whatever it is, before you triggered the, the residential bonus.
You have to build out a minimum.
You've gotta build at least that much commercial space in order to trigger the residential bonus to, to even make this table applicable.
Right, and the question is, is that achieving what you wanna achieve? I'm not sure it is.
Well, okay, so you don't say two, you say five percent. Whatever, whatever that threshold is, to, to make it palatable for us to, to achieve what we're hoping to achieve, you set that percent.
The reality is, no matter what you do, if somebody wants a circumvent, there's always a way.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna.
Right, and that's where, you know.
I don't think we need to fret about that.
Well, I'm gonna fret, because that's always what problems.
But we don't have people knocking on our doors.
No, we don't have people knocking on our door, but that means that, you know, I still wanna make sure I don't set up, or.
Right.
Set us up.
Yeah, we've gotta think about the options, obviously, but there's always a way around, so.
Right.
I'm not real worried about it, if, if you require a certain amount of construction, commercial construction, before you can trigger residential, you know, why would anybody throw away that much money? And if they really want to, well, okay, we missed the boat on that.
Right, well, it may not be that they're looking to do it, it, it could be that their property is, they don't have a great piece of property. And they're gonna, they, you know, wanna do what they, they want, and they wanna, they wanna get it in as quickly as possible. You know, it's, it's, and that's where, that's where the, the more you try and regulate, the harder it is to fully regulate. And, and, and I'm almost to the point with you guys of, you know, do we just do a bona fide fifty-one, forty-nine?
Simplify it, it isn't.
Right.
Fifty-five, forty-five.
If you do fifty-one percent.
Right.
Why not do more, you know, eh, eh, why, why bother with the resident if you're gonna go that far?
But you leave it at the option to try to keep somebody happy, that's all it is.
Well, you, you're leaving them options to be able to get a return on their way in other ways. Besides, quite frankly, you don't want, you don't want this whole area, nothing but wall-to-wall commercial, you want residential in there.
Yeah.
You know, a good, a good town center, a good development area has a mixture of uses, and that's what keeps it alive. You want people that, you know, if you're gonna have businesses there, they're gonna be open at night, you want people who are gonna be nearby, who are gonna go to those businesses at night, otherwise, they're gonna roll up the streets and it's gonna be a dark hole, huh?
Right.
Nope, that was my.
It would become a dark, a dark corner again.
You have that now.
Exactly, that's why you don't wanna do that.
If we had more people living here, dude.
If we had more people living here, it's okay, your businesses are sermon, it's gonna be a more active place. So. I think residential shouldn't be for that.
If, if we keep it as simple as fifty-one, forty-nine.
Yeah, I was thinking, if you're not gonna get to the townhouse corner district, can we, can you let me know? Or can we maybe just move on to that, and then you can go back to this afterwards, so that I can believe it's me?
I'd like to accommodate you, but I really gotta get this done tonight.
I know, I haven't needed you either.
Uh, okay, John was saying about the.
Yeah, if we do the very simple fifty-one, forty-nine.
So, does that mean you don't believe you'll be getting to the townhouse corner district?
Yes.
We're gonna get there. If we do that.
Yeah.
A, where's the incentive to do commercial? If we just say you have to have fifty-one percent commercial? That's not an incentive-based approach to me, it's just you have to do it if you wanna do any development.
Well, to me, that, I like that, 'cause it's simple, but I like this also because there is that.
The gravity.
You, you get more reward by, by having more commercials, so.
So, start at low, so start at higher. Start at forty percent, start at thirty-five percent, you know? Remember, it's not residential density too, it's not.
Well, then you're back to this table we got here.
Yeah, which I, I don't mind. Try to get more commercial, but if you, if you put thirty, you're lacking commercial. You, you can, you have as much commercial as you want, and it's working, you're gonna wanna do more commercial. But, you know, your residence, you know, could be.
Especially with the, I mean.
Okay, Tom, let me ask you this, how would you set this table up? We're close to where it is, I, I maybe have, go, I'd probably go with three acres, twenty-six to fifty percent, three acres.
Anybody have any ideas about that, any objection to that?
Yeah, I don't like twenty-six. No.
It's too low. Twenty-six is too low?
I think so.
It's only a quarter of the, it's only a quarter of the parcel.
Because you're gonna suck it, you're gonna suck everything up.
But that's why I'm saying the three acres, so you're not gonna get as many residents in there, with residential lots. But I, I can go high with the percentage, thirty, to five percent?
Forty percent came close to fifty-one percent, so, yeah.
Let's go thirty, I mean, I was thinking, I was originally, I was thinking a third, so.
So, I, I have thirty-three.
You know, what do we do?
So, so thirty percent.
Let's go thirty-five to.
Yeah, I thought, so I wrote down thirty-five.
Thirty-five to sixty-five.
Well, thirty-five to fifty.
Let's go thirty-five to fifty.
Thirty-five to fifty.
Two acres.
Two acres.
Okay.
Okay.
Fifty to sixty-five, acre and a half, sixty-six plus one.
Fifty-one to.
Sixty-six plus.
Right, forget the half acre.
Yeah.
With, with sewer.
Well, it'll have to work, let's, let's.
Let's cross that bridge.
We haven't got there yet.
Yeah.
Well, it took us twenty-five years to do this water first.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, let's go over this again.
So, can we, yeah, let's see if we can adopt that.
Thirty-five to fifty.
Thirty-five to fifty, two acres, yep, fifty-one to sixty-five.
Hundred and a half acres?
Mm-hmm.
Sixty thousand square feet.
Sixty-six plus.
And sixty-five, sixty-six plus is one acre. Okay, Tom, you wanna make a motion to that effect, please?
That we accept the, that table, that we adopt that table.
Right, okay, I'll make a motion, we accept that table with, with those.
Correct.
I'll say it.
Any further discussion, can we get a vote on it? All in favor?
You know.
Okay.
What else do we have to do on?
Well, oh, yeah, I gotta figure out, get all the setbacks for that.
Oh.
That, that we do later, that's easy. Later, how much later?
My, you're gonna question.
Not a question, just a comment about how you had talked about the commercial use has to be done first, if it's gonna be a phased project.
That's what we wanna work on, that's what I wanna work on.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
I think.
How to set that up.
So, number one, with that table, we need to take out the word dedicated.
Yes, dedicated's gone.
Parcel area of non-residential.
Yeah. You wanna stay with NDD?
You have to.
What?
Yes.
Yes.
NDD, net development.
Well, we do, we, you're, you're absolutely right, we have to do it anyways as part of subdivision.
Five subdivision.
Yeah, so.
But this NDD's different than the subdivision NDD, the subdivision NDD includes, um, road area and parking area.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would do this as just the NDD as you, as you have it, because.
I like it much better, because I, I don't like the road.
Okay, what else do we have to do to the table?
I always hated that.
Fifteen percent of the parcel.
Well, just, yeah, take out what's not usable, and you gotta put the roads in.
So.
What else, what other modifications do we need to make to the table?
Uh, um, setbacks. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to do a separate setback for each one of these things. The other thing we have to determine is what is the density for, um, for a, a non-statutory lot?
Two acres.
Okay?
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah, non-statutory is two acres, that makes it, that, that goes down below, and where seventy-six is, non-statutory lot size, two acres.
And as far as the setbacks, we do have setbacks at the table, I didn't have any opposition to that from last time, so. I'll make a motion, we keep the same, the same table that, that we approved, or that we discussed last time.
Which one is, two versions of that?
The one from last time.
From April first?
April first, the April first one that was given to the, uh, to the Confluent Committee. Says April first, right?
Yeah, says April first.
The April first one.
I don't know what's different from the second one.
Well, Ted, why don't you, why don't we just, I mean, you've got, we've got zoning standards for the R2 and the R1.
Yeah.
So, why don't you take those, put them in a table, blend it for the one and a half, and, I mean, we're not, are we voting to approve this tonight?
Yes, please.
I guess we would be, yes.
The only thing is, you, you have to change, what, you have one acre here.
I don't know, we're gonna do that, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do it at next month, next week's meeting. You guys have to see what we're doing.
Right, exactly, we've gotta, you have a hard copy.
Okay, yeah.
And that's where I think.
And I don't think we can cobbler together tonight, because frankly speaking, the Confluent Committee did that Tuesday night, and now they gotta go back and fix it.
Here, Tom, no way.
So, I mean, that's what I would suggest, is come, come up with whatever our R2 and R1. So, I mean, that's what I would suggest is come come up with whatever our R two and R one.
What's the requirement that the residents, the commercial, that commercial has to come first, to get this density?
Well, that, yeah, at least has to be, the density is part of a commercial plan. You know? Yeah. Um, I still am concerned somebody, you know, shows up with a two thousand square foot office building, but, you know.
But they're going to.
Yeah.
They're going to. And that's, that's the downside to this this system versus the fifty-one percent system. They're gonna do that. You're gonna get thirty-fives. Thirty-five, you are gonna get those, so.
You will.
Now, question
But this actually gives, this actually gives more, um, this gives the property more more options than that we had before. Statutory, you don't have to give them anything. I'm just wondering about the I think it'll work.
So setbacks you have under control?
Yeah, we should
Don't forget you
We'll go with the same setbacks.
Same tables.
Same tables, same tables as in uh, in one.
And then what we were
Version seven point O.
Yeah, seven point O.
For one.
And that what, I guess we're calling a commercial plan, the language for that, you're gonna, you don't see a problem with? Right, so that they have to do the commercial development first?
Yeah, I've got that underneath, that's gonna be right under the table. We'll have to make a
And then we have to
Well, I think it should be above.
You wanna do it above?
Well, yeah, because then you
Specifically see.
Well, you get
You're seeing it first.
You get, you you've gotta do a commercial plan. If you do, you get this table below.
Yeah, makes sense.
You don't get no freebies until you
You don't get the table until you do the commercial plan.
And I think also for town meeting benefit, there ought to be at least a sentence, if not a short paragraph, to explain that this that, you know, that the landowner retains right to do individual commercial lots, uh, I'm sorry, individual residential lots.
That aren't.
Well, I'm gonna put it in the table.
Yeah.
It's gonna be in the table right underneath sixty-six plus. It's gonna say
That's good.
You know, in
Non-statutory
Non-statutory subdivision.
No, I wouldn't say subdivision.
I gotta say, I have to say either family, I'm gonna have to say incremental subdivision or family divisions. You know, two acres. And exempt, exempted, or exemptions, exemptions, that's how it's gonna go. Exemption, right there. Exemption. Family lots, uh, family divisions, and incremental, incremental subdiv, incremental subdivided lots.
Right.
Incrementally divided lots.
Right.
Good.
So, okay, that would
Yeah, that would be in that table there.
Look at all this. And then all the uses, we're not gonna even look at that. We're all happy with that.
Yeah, we're all happy with that.
So what else do we need to change?
I think that's it for that.
Yeah, I think, we did all the, we got all the, we did all the stuff, no design standards, the signage was Did they ever do signage on this? Think it did.
I don't remember, did it?
If we're gonna keep the same as, let's say now.
Yeah.
See, we can get, did signage for fifty-one, I don't know, the
I don't think we ever did. I think it's
Oh. The other thing is, you wanna turn out, make a note
Make it the same.
Somewhere along the way here.
The C D one? That's very restrictive. More restrictive.
Say whatever it is in fact now.
Hundred square foot signs?
No. Yeah, that's fine, dude.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
You're gonna be back way off the street.
Can't seem to
Jesus. They have to get them, they have to have streets to get to their businesses, so there's gonna be streets back there or driveways back there.
Well, then your spare time, Ty, don't have to come up with
Well, the other thing
I'll do it before Wednesday.
The other thing you have to turn out and state throughout here, you will have to have water service out there for fire.
That's part of subdivision.
Well, I'm still saying, if you turn out to have it within a thousand feet.
Well, remember something, Marty, that all of these things are gonna be under site plan, okay? And remember what one of the provisions for for a site plan is, unconditional use is fire, is public safety, fire protection. So they, you have it covered both from a subdivision standpoint, and you also have it covered from from a site plan standpoint. Remember, that's that's one of the things you have to check off with site plan. We just haven't done it with site plans. Where it's in the same list as as with the conditional uses, where you have to go off each one of those things, fire protection is one.
Wow, I can give you an example, perfect example is is your campground. You have more than a thousand feet, you don't need any but hydrant it.
Well, it's not gonna be the plane boy's decision, it's gonna be the fire.
The fire's decision.
Should we all sit with downtown business district too?
I think we're
Okay, can we move on to Town House Corner District?
Hey, you didn't bring hamburgers with you. Or any wookie pies.
Okay, Tab, you want to
No, that's Jen.
I don't know, I haven't had it. Just found another error. It's not an error, you know, doing the Frankenstein switch, you know, where you see the sections five, three, which are the the performance standards under the new ordinance.
They keep bringing back
Yeah, I have to keep switching them back to sevens, you know? We're gonna look at April third.
Version three point three.
Yeah, three point three.
Eight.
So there was an updated version? No, I got eight, I got, I got three point two.
There's an updated version every twenty-four hours.
There you go.
No, you got it.
Are you good? That's what happens when the complaint committee gets something with itself. Okay. Did you get the new section?
Yeah, I got it, um. Can I start?
Of course.
Can I address it?
Run it right up to the table.
No. Well, I was here at that last meeting and, um, I don't recall the commercial parking facilities, that being crossed out, under conditional uses? Is that?
That was, that was, that was something that
Well, I know it was discussed, but I I mean, when it's under conditional use, that means it needs to be brought before the planning board to get approved, right? And if you take it out altogether, then there's no chance of it whatsoever, okay? There's certain, I mean, I mean, I think you're limiting a lot of things by, I mean, if you don't want a big commercial parking facility, I can understand, but if somebody has wants to park a couple of vehicles, I mean, I think you're
For what reason? What's an associated, what's an associated? You can park, it's a business, you can park vehicles that are associated with a permitted use.
That's good.
No, no, uh, somebody talked about putting a, um, visiting center in there. Okay, and which might mean parking a couple of buses.
Car motor homes. What do you mean by visiting center?
Uh, I don't know all the details, but somebody has approached Jen, um, and this, and and myself about a visiting center. Uh, a place to, you know?
Get information.
Get information.
Information.
Yeah, that type of thing, and, yeah.
One, one of the things, we did, we did have a proposal years ago for for a commercial parking facility, would have been buses there.
Yep.
And it just didn't fly. The neighbors just didn't want it, in part, you run diesel buses running all day, and then just coming in and out, causing traffic.
Well, I, like I said, you don't, um,
So where's the limit?
Right.
Where do you draw the line?
Well, you can't allow diesel buses to be running all day, I mean they do?
Unfortunately, if you got a bus driver sitting there.
Yeah.
I mean, he, he's, he's in the sweat pit, I mean, uh
But I'm just saying, it should be something that should be brought to the planning board, instead of just eliminating it altogether.
Well, I'll tell you why it's crossed out, 'cause the complaint committee didn't like the commercial parking lot, and you guys didn't either the last time you went over this.
Well, I was here at that last meeting, I would have spoke up about it.
And you said, huh? You said, I don't think
You said we brought it into it, but we didn't say no.
Well, I can understand it not being in a permitted use. And I know, understand there needs to be limitations. Maybe, you know, there's there's properties there that they're they're set back away from the road, and there's no neighbors involved, there's tree lines and there's boundaries. I mean, there's certain circumstances where it might work, there's circumstances where it's not going to. I just can't, I imagine eliminating it altogether.
To watch, and I think that's probably the the most, most likely type of business use that would fill that that district first. Kenny Buckport is dying for a place to send the buses to, and that's the closest place, so we have to be careful of opening up to that potential. It could be five different, just commercial bus parking lots, and so we have to watch out. The other thing is, even if they shut the engines off or anything, and they're in the woods, you do have that extra bus traffic just coming into they have it there.
That bus traffic is there anyway, they live on that road.
In and out, but they're going, they're going straight through right now.
No.
Regardless, Tab, I'm I'm curious as to where, you said comprehensive plan?
Yeah, they didn't like it. Well, yeah, they went over the uses, make sure that, you know, to see if the uses were whether their descriptions were in conformance with the uses we were looking at.
Right.
And they said they they were having a problem with that. They didn't think there should be, uh, commercial parking lots. Associated with something, yes, but not
Rationalist or what?
Well, they just didn't think, well, number one, they asked the question was, was this, does it fit the, does it fit the character of what else you're trying to do there? Number one, and number two is, they asked the question, where's the return? You know, where's the return for, in terms of revenue? There's no, there's no
Well, there's more we, there's, I mean, if you looked at it that way, then we shouldn't allow any residential, and everything should be commercial.
Yeah.
So you can't look at it that way.
There are those who believe that way.
You can't, you can't look at it that way, but the thing is, is like, commercial parking facility, I can, it's in probably their heads that, you know, we're talking about this large parking lot with all these buses, there's gonna be fifteen, twenty of them, but, you know, there might be an opportunity for two or three of them. I just don't believe that you should limit it altogether. Eliminate, eliminate it, I should say.
Or the other thing is also, no, for your parking or anything else, you've got people who come in, and if you're gonna have the trolleys running back and forth, you got people with motorhomes.
Show me where we have a commercial parking lot.
You aren't gonna try and put a motorhome in a, in a small area
Yeah.
To park, to go down in Kennybunkport or in this area altogether.
It's associated with
Or even if you have a restaurant, even if you have a restaurant down there, depends on the size of your restaurant, you aren't gonna be able to park a motorhome at the restaurant, because there's
Well, my my feeling is that parking, there may not be a lot of revenue for the town, because there's no infrastructure there, but it could be pretty good revenue for, you know, as a business.
Oh, it's definitely a a revenue for for a business owner, that, I mean, a landlord, absolutely.
So why should we discourage that?
Does it fit with that, with what you're trying to do now?
And we still have
This has to pass the vote
It's trying to make it miss use.
If I lived down there and I knew that
Gasoline stations are missed.
Loud, I'd vote against it.
We don't
I think all the, the neighborhood down there
Yeah, those neighbors also have R H Brown right across the street, and all those trucks are going in there all day long, you know, it's the same neighborhood.
But didn't we try this once before?
Yeah, that was proposal and and it
And and if it's proposed, and it's, if it's voted down or whatever, but I just, what you're doing is you're eliminating it altogether.
I hate to see the Town House Corner District zoning, rezoning, get shot down for one item.
Right, that's that's the, that's the risk. If you have it in there and town meeting doesn't like it, that would cancel the entire ordinance, or the entire warrant article, which would be
Entire district.
Townhouse district. So that's a risk.
Tab, can I ask you a question real quick on the permitted uses?
Yeah.
Those nineteen items are solely reviewed by planning staff?
No.
No? That's what I thought I heard somebody say.
Wait, remember, site plan, site plan has thresholds.
Yep.
If if it's, if it's small enough, it's site, it's it's staff. If it's large enough, it's site plan.
Yeah, just because it's permitted doesn't mean it doesn't get
Yeah, still, it still has to, it's supposed to be
Just as, doesn't have to meet the conditional use
No, it doesn't have to do that conditional use stuff. It just has to be
I thought, I heard somebody say something
Well, there are, there are, there are, there are thresholds where it's just C E L.
Well, the next way
That's determined by you guys, but you guys did that, what, two years ago?
Well, the next way I was looking at this and thinking, it's a, it's a big wide range of permitted uses that, you know, some of which I think are very appropriate to be handled at the staff level, and others, not so much.
It's, you guys set it up so it was, it was a scale issue. If it's a small scale, staff can do it. If it's a large scale, you know, you guys do it. And the scale is, you know, very honestly, like, three parking spaces is is the limit for staff to review something, which is
You gotta keep moving here, guys.
So, okay, if we had this as conditional use, you'd have to write up some standards, right? But, yeah, and have to write up some standards. All of these things, I have to write up standards.
Before we get
I only have the standards for
You know, as far as, as far as this Town House Corner District, is is this, and I'm glad you're here, Linda, because is is that do the people down there actually feel that that's a good approach to it? To me, it's, it's, and again, it's just me, but it's it's a lot of really strict regulation, which I think is gonna get a negative review at town meeting.
Yeah, I haven't got to that part.
Okay.
About
So there's a lot there that
Right, but but as far as like conditional uses, I mean, I I'm not worried that that could get voted down, because somebody would wouldn't want any commercial parking there. I mean, maybe, you know, somebody might question having marijuana production there, you know what I mean? No matter what, there's always gonna be
I agree.
You know what I mean? It's not, but it's
My idea.
It it's, it's a conditional use. I mean, if you were to put that in permitted use, then I can understand people, you know?
Question for you.
So we do have to go through a bunch of
You have to try and use the word commercial, just parking.
Yeah, just for parking.
Well, there's a difference between parking facility and and, see, a parking facility is usually associated with a use. Okay? Would you agree?
Yeah, if I have a restaurant, I need twenty parking places. That's my
That's a
Yeah, but that's a given.
That's the defined parking.
Yeah, but that's, that's a given. You have a restaurant.
That's a parking facility.
But I'm just saying, parking facility
But the commercial, the commercial, the commercial differentiates it between a a run-of-the-mill parking lot associated with a business, with the
The intent of the use is to park vehicles. The primary use is to park vehicles, whereas a parking lot for for, yeah
An ancillary use.
Yeah, is an ancillary to it. So your parking lot for your pizza hut is an accessory use to your, to a necessary accessory use to your primary use, which is, I'm selling pizzas, I got a restaurant. This, it's, it's
You're paying.
You're paying to park there, and that's the only thing that happens there, is you park there. It's not associated use. So in other words, if I go, if I go to our parking stands, or I go to anybody's parking stands, I'm not gonna see parking facility, minimum number of parking spaces, five per square foot, or something like that, like you would with 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 an associated parking lot. So it's, it's a, it's a use unto itself. Commercial parking lot is a use unto itself.
Right, and you're saying, or the comprehensive plan is saying that it doesn't fit with the neighborhood?
Well, they, you know, they didn't, you know, it's funny, they didn't put a prohibition in it. They just, they, you know, they went down my list and said, well, why is it, no, we don't like that, and we like this, we like that, and this should be changed changed over there, and we think you should do this, and I said, started saying, well,
Now you're in the planning board's gate here.
Yeah.
This is really the planning board.
Well, we, we determine uses, but you don't determine which ones are.
Now, why don't they go over everything?
Well, they have, actually, you know, they have, you know, they've given us, they've given us, I'm just telling you that, that, that has been crossed out for a while, and they agreed with it being crossed out.
It wasn't crossed out last time we were here.
Yeah, it was. It was.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah.
Ah, regardless, I, you know.
I wonder if I have.
Why, why would we prohibit it if, you know?
Yeah.
My question is, if it doesn't fit into the neighborhood, I'd like to know how it doesn't fit into the neighborhood, what.
It depends on where in that neighborhood it's gonna be.
Why, I have a question, what good will it do for the town?
It's gonna benefit the Kinnabon.
Benefits, benefits the resident, at least one resident.
The property owner, but for the town. Taxpaying property owner is the town.
But if, if this district.
That's a single, you, that's not the town, that.
But if this district.
As much as that might, might benefit that property owner, it would be a huge disadvantage to, to the, the neighbors, having, having buses sitting idling all day, that would suck. It's summertime and you wanna have barbecue, you get fumes and so it.
But if you've already got a gravel pit across the road, what's it?
Well, that gravel pit actually is a lot different than it used to be. They, they're not grinding it there.
It's a storage yard.
Yes, yeah.
But, all right, so.
So, but that, but that is a, to me, that's a standard we can put in place with the conditional use. Prohibit the amount of time idling may occur for a, a extended period, you know.
It's gonna enforce that.
Ted, that's an enforceability issue.
Maybe they'll enforce it if they don't like it.
Yeah. Unfortunately, at that point, it's too late.
I can't enforce, I can't enforce decimal levels right now.
Right.
Which I haven't made before. So, you know, that, that's not gonna work.
No, it's, that does make it tough.
Yeah, but it'd be a re-specify.
But if it's there, right, if it's there, at least you've got someone.
But a permanent area, it would be different.
Once we find the fact, there's always noise and odor and other.
And it's always the issue that.
Right, how, how could we say that's not gonna be an issue?
Well, you won't know until they break, they, they, they bring you a, a, a proposal, and if it's gonna, if noise is gonna be issue and all that other stuff, then you don't.
From what we know about, about commercial parking lots with, with buses, it, it always will, will be noisy and smelling.
Well, how much?
But, but there also could be, there could be an advantage, or it could be a, a incentive for somebody to wanna build a small parking lot, then they find a niche that people are biking down into the port, or whoever knows what. And from that standpoint.
I'm just afraid of opening the, the barn door, and it would, there would be a, a, a rush to grab as much of that land as quick as possible and pave as much of it from the dark square, it, it'll benefit them, but not.
Dark square is a long way down, Tom.
It is, no, it's, it's a mile away, they have no other parking lot, they're looking for a place to dump their, their, their buses. They're looking to dump their buses, and they've asked Arundel to be the dumping ground. And that's what I have a problem with, we're just, we, we, the tax base will be nil.
So, how are the.
All it is is just pavement.
How would, if, if, if a bus drop-off location is somewhere right there on that map? And Linda, you might be able to elaborate. How would the people go from the drop-off point to the primary?
They don't get dropped off, they, they get dropped off in dark square, then the bus comes back.
And sits, and sits there all day long.
Or, or, or the trolley, I don't believe trolleys have to run. No.
Well, the buses don't have to run.
They don't, buses don't have to run either.
Right.
Well, the other thing you said about tax base?
Yeah.
Very simply, you got one, the town gets a dollar, dollar per square foot, turn it on for anything that's asphalt every year. So, if you got forty thousand square feet, you get forty thousand dollars a year revenue to the town.
What, asphalt and gravel?
Huh?
That's not an assessment.
Yes, it is.
We do not get a dollar per square foot, Marty. We did, we'd be, we'd be doing parking lots all over the place.
Right.
If I could get that, I'd, I'd, I'll sign it.
Huh?
How much you pay?
Hell, if you wanted to.
Parking lot.
Let, let's get back to the, the parking facilities, because we're, we're focusing on that, yet supposedly conditional use of boat building, takeout restaurant, automotive service, you know, that's okay, so how is, how is parking lot?
I mean, I mean, automotive service, you're gonna get more flack for that than you.
How is parking lot more disruptive?
Well, we have it there already. We already have all those.
Yeah, so whatever's there is okay, whatever's not, is not okay? Is that the way we do this? You know, I'm saying, why, why is, is parking?
It's in here, it's not, it's not prohibited, it's just a conditional use.
Why is commercial parking?
But you're making parking prohibitive.
Why is that?
What about Cameron?
Well, first of all.
You had four probably.
Show me, all right, well, where else do we have it? That I can use?
Commercial parking?
Yeah.
We don't have it as far as I know.
Okay, so, this is.
We're introducing a new use.
Yeah, it's a new, and that's, that's fine, we introduce.
So, so, I mean, if you're introducing a new use, does that mean you don't have to bring attention to it whatsoever? If somebody comes to you and wants to.
You have to have a definition.
Wants to, if you, par, have any type of parking facility.
Yeah.
You're, is, does that mean because you don't have that use listed, it can never, ever be?
No.
No, correct.
It has to have a definition.
It is an amendment.
Every use has to have a definition.
Well, the only way you can do that is if you have special exceptions, but the board has decided we don't wanna do special exceptions, and we don't do kinds.
What do you mean by, who?
Well, you know, if you bring a good idea and you, and it meets, you know, it meets no impact, or it meets, it doesn't have impacts, then it can be allowed even though it's not in the zoning laws, but the board decided we didn't wanna do that, so we're not doing that.
But you have to have a definition.
But say, if somebody wanted to put a park and ride type thing right on Route One somewhere because people were commuting and they wanted to, there was a good, say there was a good pickup spot, and they wanted to put twenty spaces in there for a park and ride. Town, that's, that's prohibited.
Yeah, I agree, prohibited, yeah. What, if it was a state one, a municipal use or a state use, it's permitted, and that's why all parking rides are always state, all MDOT, which precludes local zoning.
Trolley?
Yes, it's trolley, is it?
The trolley, uh, um, that runs from Wells back and forth, that's not state.
I, I don't know.
Well, Wells is zoning.
Well, no, they come up to Kenny Bunkport because they have to reciprocating between town and Kenny Bunk, Kenny Bunkport and Wells, and that's not state, that's trolley.
That's municipal, that, that's an intermunicipal system for private.
But my reaction is to be opposed, but I can be convinced, but I, I don't know what would be good about having that there. That's, except for the single property order, great, great for them, but what else would be good about it?
Yeah, I could, I could.
Yeah, well, I mean.
It is not, oddly enough, it's not allowed anyplace else in town, and this, it would be.
We don't have a demand for it, that's why. It's usually associated, it's a sort of, associated with.
And there's been, there's been people in that area that have been approached about.
It might, someplace on Route One might, might make sense.
No, 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 I mean, closer to dark square.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's those are the people that are being approached if you're not, they're not.
The bus companies, but wanna be close, that's a.
See, we still don't have a demand for it, because the demand isn't Kenny Bunk.
No, the demand.
Kenny Bunk needs it, we don't.
No.
Kenny Bunkport.
Kenny Bunkport.
Kenny Bunk too.
Yeah, but we benefit from the overflow of the tourists coming into Kenny Bunkport.
Well, what, see, what, what I'm, what I'm getting at is this, if we have the right type, what I was envisioning, this would be benefit grabbing the overflow, people going by and building on that.
Exactly.
If we have that one bus depot, if, if I was in, if I was a tourist, I'd go right past the bus depot, but if it was more of what's there, Winks and that type of thing, I might stop and get a sandwich, but.
Well, and that's what I, I see as a parking facility with some limitations on it, would be a draw to that area because people would, especially that far out, I mean, I'm, I'm under the inclination of, okay, you're gonna, you either wanna get a little bit of a walk-in before you go to the port, you don't wanna deal with the traffic, but depending on when you get down there.
It's a great example of what you're talking about, and it's called the rest area of Kenny Bunk, Route ninety-five, so, that's it, that's, you stop and you, you go take a, you get a cup of coffee and you keep going.
But, or, you know, or you, you get a, a niche roof of somebody that wants to bike in, they wanna bike down in, you know, the, the one down by the fire station in Kenny Bunkport's not far enough of a ride.
Yeah.
So, they stop there, you've also got the bike shop right next to it, and then around that would blossom, you know, Winks is there, but, you know, an ice cream shop or who knows what, that, you know, might serve as an amenity to the tourists that are returning to their car.
So, that would be just small vehicles, not the bus, not the tour buses.
That's my, that's what I would envision, I mean, and that's where I would say.
I wouldn't be all that opposed to that.
Commercial parking, but we would need to allow, my inclination would be to allow the use, but not allow the use to be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, exactly.
Or, all right.
So, you'd be eliminating buses.
No, I wouldn't necessarily eliminate buses.
No, no.
But it might, it might be.
Require them to be off.
But it might be planned for a bus, I mean, despite Ted's reservations, to not run for, you know, four hours once they're sitting there, you know, come, if the bus driver doesn't like it.
They can't stay.
Right, find someplace else to go.
Usually, it's because it's summertime and it's hot, so.
Yeah.
They go to the air conditioning.
Wait a minute, so find, find a shade tree.
We're gonna have to plant some.
There, there are, I grew up with plenty of people that didn't have air conditioners, and they survived.
Well, you know, but I think that was the other thing that this, you know, that you talked about, uh, parking, uh, the buses, they, they, you know, with a visitor center, if they were, that was gonna have a place where there's gonna be restrooms and a visitor center and information and all that other stuff, our sitting area, or, you know, the bus drivers, they don't have to sit on the bus.
Correct, correct. But the, the other thing is, where we had it in the past about commercial buses, was down around above Winks, where the Sinclair.
Yeah.
Down through there, that's where the neighbors were complaining because they didn't wanna smell the, the idea of fumes or everything else, but that was abutting the neighbors itself. But if you turn on, came down farther down Love Cabin Road, where the old store used to be, okay, right after Van Gaspys, there aren't, are per se many houses around there, that's Open Acreage.
Ted's come up with something here.
I haven't come up with something, I just, well, let's, 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 let's then call it a visitor, a, you know, a visitor center, visitor information center with associated parking, so they provide a little visitor center, maybe some bathrooms, or something like that.
Upgrade.
Which would make sense, right?
Yeah, then we get some revenue from it.
We'll get a little bit of revenue.
Yeah.
But it's not just a parking lot, it's, it's an destination of.
And it has some form of an amenity.
Yeah, it's got an amenity to it and, and, you know, and, and it's landscaped in some way that, you know.
Right.
So, it, it, it's, it's just not an empty space of, of asphalt.
Back to the standard that we were looking for. If it's gonna be conditional use, gotta have standards.
Well, but I think what Ted's gonna do is tie, is looking is to tie the parking to an approved.
To an use.
To an approved, of conditional use.
Like a visitor center.
Yeah, a little visitor center, you know.
More than a G.I.A.
Which, which makes sense.
It wouldn't make sense, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna say nothing of the rag by itself.
It's gonna say, welcome to Arundel.
Welcome to Arundel, screw skin, Kenny Bunkport.
You know, it's, it's like I said, it's not that I just think it should've been opened up, anybody can have a, a parking lot wherever they want, and, you know what I mean? That's why.
So, there would be a controlled parking lot.
So.
How so?
Oh, I don't know, I, I don't know how all the details work, all my knowledge, I just dislike the idea of prohibiting it altogether.
But if you have.
First of all.
But if you have a visitor center, presumably, you know, for the, the example of not being able to enforce a parking restriction, how long somebody runs a bus or whatever else, if you have a visitor center, they.
There's so.
Could, could, part of their job may be to enforce the parking restrictions.
Yeah, there's gonna be.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm just.
Then it has to be a manager on site.
Yeah, it's gonna be a manager on site.
Well, not necessarily, no. I mean, it might not necessarily be a manager on site.
True.
You, you.
Or employee.
Maybe a counseling center, come and pick it all up and just.
Well, that's, yeah.
Well, that's just it, I mean, you, you.
With some bathrooms there, yeah, they gotta be cleaned though, you know, daily basis or something, but, you know, it's not, you, you, you're not gonna ask them to man it twenty-four seven, unless it's commercial. I mean, if this is just a spot where, I mean, how would they, would they have a gate? I mean, if you have it, you have no idea.
Yeah.
It's a theory.
I like the idea of a visitor center. We don't have a.
Visitor parking?
We don't.
It's not permanent parking.
We don't have a restriction on the amount of parking somebody can put in.
No.
Well, my favorite service can do it.
Actually, we do, but we never got to that.
Was it ninety percent, seventy-five percent or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's gonna govern whatever it is. Right, whether we call it a parking, if we call it a commercial parking facility or a visitor center, it's gonna have a maximum impervious coverage in the zone.
Believe me, it will, because it'll not be strike, you have to also put your motorcycle, you gotta turn and do everything else.
So.
Designated parking, your handicap and everything.
But where you have, where you have some uses that have minimum parking requirements, we don't have maximum parking requirements.
We talked about it, but we haven't gotten there yet. We won't get there. Sure we will.
Okay, so what do you, to move this along, what do you wanna do?
Most, you don't have to, because most people, any, any mall, for instance, now is putting Uno's and other things in, in their maximum parking space at this point, they say, we'll, 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 we'll deal with the Christmas rush, we'll deal with the Christmas, you know, clutter, because parking is expensive. It's expensive to build, it's expensive to maintain and blow out and all the rest of that stuff, so.
So, so do we have you go back and write a description?
Well, I, I want us to be agreed on it, for me to do a description, then I gotta come up with standards for it. Jeez, guys, I mean.
What do you guys wanna do?
Visitor center.
I like the idea of that.
I think it's saleable.
Mm-hmm.
I think commercial parking lot's not saleable, but I think a visitor center with associated parking is saleable. I think it's sellable.
You don't have to say with associated parking.
I don't think you do, I think you just do visitor center. As a conditional use.
And in the description, right.
Well, and, and in the description.
It's got associated parking, because otherwise people would say, oh, why does it have that parking?
Well, because they're proposing parking.
But I'm saying in the definition, I'm gonna say visitor center.
Yes.
With a bathroom and something, and associated parking.
So that would be on the conditional use.
With no requirement on how much parking.
Or a little parking.
Or how little parking, which, you know, they often do. They say no more than five.
We do that with the farm states.
Right.
You know?
In, in the, uh, the standard use, the, the conditions, I wanna make sure it just has to become a bus depot. Uh, which is a huge likelihood that, that.
It could be.
It could be. So, that's just my take. I might get outvoted.
No, I, I agree with you. We went, we went down the road once before.
And the neighbors are all over it. We thought it would be good. I was, I thought it was good.
Yeah, no, we all thought it was a good idea.
No, I think we're all in, I shouldn't say all in agreement, but I think there's a lot of agreement that we don't want to see, you know, a diesel cloud coming from the backside of.
And if the neighbors are against it, then it doesn't happen. You know what I mean?
Well, I'll tell you honestly.
Yeah.
It's conditional use, and they meet the conditions on, no matter what the neighbors say.
Right.
But, you know, it's, it's got that one, it's, we've got that one little gigantic landmine in the conditional use that says, we'll not cause any offensive odors, glare, noise, nuisances. And that's where they come and they come out and say, the noise, the, the glare, the nuisances. And that's where the planning board could be in a position to deny it. But they can't deny it cause the neighbors don't like it.
Well, yeah, but.
Can't, they can't say they don't like it because it's not there yet.
And you can't, you know, you'd have a very difficult.
Time was marching on and like we were supposed to.
Removing it.
One minute ago.
What time is it?
All right, um, I also remember.
Okay, let me hold on a minute. So. You gotta vote on this first. Yeah. So.
I don't gotta vote on it.
Can I get a motion from someone on the floor?
Yeah, put a visitor center in.
What motion?
The motion.
As a, as a conditional use.
As a conditional use.
Second.
I'm gonna come up with a definition for it.
Yes.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
I, I wanna, um, be able to vote again on, depending on what the standard.
What the language is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, okay, so then move that along. What do you think about these other underlying guys? Caregiver, medical, marijuana.
I don't have a problem with it, but others might. I don't think, no, because it's already a law.
I don't even know what that is, recreational facility accepted, accepting powered vehicle amusements.
Go-karts.
Go-karts.
Oh, okay.
I couldn't find that one either.
I'm like, where'd that go from?
Came from our planning committee. Well, you know why they said that? Cause it was just recreational facilities. And they said, whoa, somebody puts a go-kart in there and those people will skin you guys at the planning board alive. Be aware of that. You know, if you put in go-karts or, or dirt bikes or motocross or something like that.
Oh, so this is eliminating, eliminating.
It's a conditional use.
Yeah, it eliminates. It says, you can have a recreational facility, but if you're thinking about putting go-karts or something like that, forget it.
Oh.
Okay to do a water park.
You can do, uh, uh, you can do a, uh. Accepting powered vehicle, accepting. I can't say, I'm like, is that wrong? Is that the wrong rule?
No, no.
I don't, I don't know if I agree with it, but.
Rather have that in the D, in the DB1 ownership. And no neighbors to deal with it.
Well, we tried that too before.
Well.
Educational facilities are in the DB1.
That's what recreational, the facility depends.
I haven't done it yet.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that was a generic.
It came up to.
Number 10, everybody's alright with number 10?
Miracle, yeah, this is why we're not calling this the TCD district instead of the THC district. So many guys. Oh, this is being filmed. You said it, I didn't.
I don't know.
Let it go up in a puff. Uh, what did you guys think about that? I mean, you know, uh, cause right now, there isn't, the reason why is that agriculture isn't in here. And ag, and marijuana.
13.
Yeah, okay, never mind. Um, what they wanted to do, I'm sorry, I forgot. This is all came down Tuesday. What they had recommended, and I'm proposing because they made a recommendation, was that, fine, agriculture, you should allow agriculture everywhere, otherwise people think you're, you're not gonna let you garden in your backyard.
Right.
You know, um, but, uh, they said, uh, caregiver marijuana, make that conditional use. You know, because that, right now, we have it classified as agriculture. Cause we don't make a distinction.
Yep.
Between indoor and outdoor agricultural production. So that if somebody want, were to wanna do backyard farms, they can. They don't have to worry about that.
So you'll have to come up with standards for that too.
Well, luckily, it's, the state's already got standards.
So many plans, it can be.
Well, it's six and six. It's six plants per six people.
But if the state's already got standards, why would they have to bother?
Well, the standards are, you know, what you're gonna do with, with advertising, basically. And which isn't really a problem, cause these guys get really, I had, you know, we had two of them going here in town. One of the guys was really upset, but I had to advertise it. You know, I had to do a public hearing. I had to advertise it. He said, you, you're wrecking my security. And I said, baby, you're in the public realm now, you know. And if you're not, what are you worried about, you know?
Hey, he never had any visitors.
No, he didn't have any visitors. Well, he delivered.
But how about the other thing about production or dispensary?
If it's not here, it's not.
Because we've already approved an application through the selectmen to have a dispensary, but.
Also limited, there was only 13 of them already and we didn't get one.
No, I'm just saying.
Okay, um, we're gonna get out the, out the space?
We didn't make any change. The only change you made was you went from 60,000 to one acreage.
Yeah.
That's the only change there. And you got rid of all the, uh, you didn't want any, you didn't want anything different for accessory structures.
Right.
So accessory structures are all gone. Uh, you wanted, uh, when it came down to the design standards, you wanted to, uh, um, get rid of certain things. You know, frankly, I went through this, cause I, I went through this with the chairman of comp, complaining about, about this. And I said, you know, it looks like a lot, but man, this is really simple stuff. It is really, really simple stuff. And, and I agreed, and I agreed with her that I would sit down and do a, do a public, uh, you know, design thing here to say, this is really, you know, there's not mu, there's not much restriction in that. The stuff that, we did get some, some, um, the, the fenestration, 25 to 66, 25 is a block house, and 66 is a, is a glass house, is a ribbon house. And so that's, that's basically the, the difference in there. Your average, your average single family home has about 30% fenestration of glass. Your average store has about, I would say, 45%, and that's high. That's with, with big windows in the front.
That's my guy.
There you go. Yours, you're not in this district.
I know.
Well, it is an example.
Well, you actually, you have, you don't have that much. If you really look at your glass compared to your.
Well, cause it's just in the front.
Yeah, you don't have that much. You actually, you, you, no, you don't put that auto dealership.
I could not put that there.
No, you could not. And you didn't want them to put that there, cause as you remember, the EDC said, we want it to look just like a neighborhood thing.
Don't you be putting ones in my mouth. We wanted to be nice to our neighbors.
Which was continue the residential look.
Well.
As much as possible.
But I, you know, you got, you're, you're saying here that if somebody wanted to put up a boat building facility, which is nothing more than a barn. They.
Why can't they?
Uh, well, according to US standards, it's gonna look like a nice house.
Where?
They can't put a metal building up, from what I can see. Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
You guys didn't want metal buildings.
I didn't say, no, we didn't, never, ever.
Yes, and you also got rid of flat roofs buildings, if you recall. Cause I had flat roof buildings in here, and you guys said, we don't want flat roof buildings. We gotta have pitch roofs. And went, okay, because we got them in the DB, we got them in the DB1, we got flat roof buildings, remember? We gotta close it in the DB1.
Where?
In the DB1 standards, it's flat roof buildings.
Standards, not necessarily out there on the street.
We were, yeah, but when you're talking about like something that's, you know, I, I think what we were talking about is someone's got a house, we didn't wanna put, you know, right next door to them. Uh, you know, something that's gonna, you know, but when you have property that's, a lot of this stuff is set back, I don't understand how like we could make somebody, make this, like a, like I said, like a boat building facility look like, you know. Nice little.
Landing boat still has a flat roof, don't they?
A, a nice little cottage. Do you know what I'm saying? I, I, there's, there's a lot of restrictions on, and.
Which ones?
Well, all of it. I think I remember Mr. DeKinderin telling you to knock this down like three pages, with your exact words.
Well, I was surprised that it was still all of that stuff in there.
You were surprised too.
Well, what, what, tell me what the stuff is that's, that is objectionable.
Well, okay, well, the, the, the windows and doors, like I said, if someone's putting up some sort of manufacturing, like a boat facility in the back, not right in the front, um.
Well, right now.
Was that realistic?
Well, let me ask you. I mean, they'd ever been to agree with the boat building facility?
You did.
Well, remember, that was just, that was just added. That was added Tuesday. Wasn't in there before. That was added Tuesday.
Well, I don't know why it was, we, there was a lot of conversation about the boat builder that had to leave. I don't know why it wouldn't have been in there. Because he left.
I think, especially in this part of town, I, I mean, I think it would be appropriate.
That's what I thought. That's why I put it in.
No, there, there is.
You got a definition for it?
There is a boat building facility.
Now, yeah, no.
But we've, we've already in town. Love Cabin, right?
Right, yeah.
That's a school, Marty.
No.
It's a school.
DMIR was a boat builder.
Is he a boat builder now?
DMIR? Yes, of course, yeah.
Okay, and he's in the business industrial district.
But you have a definition.
There is.
I think he's on the manufacturer.
Number one.
So boat builder.
It's right next to, uh, Southern Main.
Oh, yeah.
You're looking at the wrong map. Don't look at that.
There was all a boat builder that, that's right in that district.
Yeah.
Right, but he's, he left.
But also there's one on Senate Road.
Yeah, but, but it was a boat builder still.
But it was a boat building and it was quiet and it was.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it was. One of two employees, it was.
Real low, low impact.
So what else?
Very low impact.
What else do we have objections to?
Um, so, I mean, I, I mean, that was.
We were looking at, look, standards are, are over the top, really.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. What standards are over the top? Tell me, show me one.
Um, aluminum siding shall be prohibited.
Yeah.
Okay.
But vinyl's in.
I know, you added vinyl. How do you call that?
Yeah, you asked for vinyl.
No, I, what, what I asked for was not to dictate, um, down to like the grain of wood, what they could make a building out of.
Well.
I don't think, I'm sorry, I wasn't more specific. What I said, vinyl, I didn't include a whole of them.
Remember, with design standards, you know, we, we had this discussion before, when you do design standards, I can't say, oh, it should look like a New England village, or it should look like.
You ever see the Morton buildings? They look like.
Adjacent, uh, you know, it should be like the adjacent architecture. You gotta put in standards, guys, or else you'll get kicked, your, your heads kicked in and forth.
Yeah.
You will get your heads kicked in and forth. So you put the mi, minimum standards.
Um, like I said, I, I.
You don't do it for housing.
I, I know there's a couple of aluminum buildings that, you know.
But you want your aluminum, you want aluminum buildings right on the front? Do you want them in the back?
But you can't put them in the back either.
Well, then maybe we, maybe we might look at that. That might be a change.
We need to look at that, but I'm just saying, like, you, I mean, especially, okay, um, Sinclair, if he wanted to, uh, upgrade his building and put a nice Morton building, like what we got, uh, like my, my recon center, you know. He couldn't put that building there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Don't you guys?
No, I thought you guys.
Very honestly, when we started this, the whole idea was to continue the neighborhood there and continue the same kind of image. They were coming out on North Street, making a small, you know, very quaint enclave. And the term that I believe was Cape Porpoise was used.
Yeah.
To make a description. This is Cape Porpoise. This is an even as restrictive as Cape Porpoise. And, you know, the thing is, we can't play ping pong with this, guys. We, we gotta, you know, I'm out of time. And i- i- if there's something that's really, really striking, like aluminum buildings in the back, fine, I can deal with that. But I'm not, I can't just strip this whole thing and expect to make town meeting. I'm not gonna be able to do it. You know, and, and I wanted somebody to show me. Linda said, okay, aluminum buildings, maybe in the back, for, for a utility building in the back that's not visible from the street. I, I can work with that. I can deal with that one. I can make these standards where they're visible from the street. We made it visible from the street, which is part of the image that you're trying to create. But if, if we've lost that image, that's not the image we wanna do.
I need, that's the point of it.
What's the point? You know? That was the original point, and that was what we sold to the neighborhood. It was, oh, yeah, we're gonna try to make it look like the rest of the neighborhood and make it, make it look like Cape Porpoise. That was the phrase that was used. So I went with Cape Porpoise. And this is in Cape Porpoise, because they're much more restrictive in their design standards than we are.
I know, but there's no sense of putting in an automotive, uh, service in there if they're not gonna be allowed to have aluminum building. I mean, I just.
What is, what's the essential? What is the essential reason for doing townhouse district?
To make, it, basically to make the, the half of the businesses that are already in there not complying.
And then also to.
To allow users, right?
It's to create the neighborhood, to create neighborhood commercial, is what it was. Right now, it can't do anything.
It's a purely residential.
No, it isn't. It's an R4 district.
The reason I'm asking is there are, there's some controversy and some disagreement as to all of those standards. Can we strip this down just to pass it at town meeting, to pass the essential, and then augment it maybe next year and work out all of these standards? And we say, you know, these are the uses that we can, that, that can be there, and these are the uses that are conditional, and then do all those standards some other time. Cause I, my reservation with this is, you know, it's not my neighborhood, I'm not familiar with it, but it seems awfully restrictive to me.
What's restrictive, John? Be specific.
All of that stuff.
What, an eight, 12 pitch or an eight, eight, a 12, eight pitch is restrictive?
Why should you be telling anybody what, what a pitch should be?
Because if you wanna make it look like Cape Porpoise, you gotta tell them what it's supposed to look like.
Well, I guess, then, I guess, I guess, it, it depends on where the, it, it is also located on that. I mean, that goes all the way back. There's gonna be places that are gonna be sitting back in the middle of the woods.
Wait a minute, it only goes to the properties that are facing, that are facing the road. It doesn't go back to the front of it.
Let me finish my thought here, because.
Only the properties that are facing the road?
Yeah.
So you're telling me that it's a.
It doesn't go to Senate Road. It goes, it goes by, your property is the only one that goes to Senate Road. It follows this pattern. It goes down like this, across, like this, up here. Yours is the only one it goes to. That's the district. It's only those lots that are facing Love Cabin Road. Doesn't go to Senate Road. Never has. It was always a very small district.
Now, let me just finish my thought for a minute, because with my concern with this, it's gotta pass town meeting. If that whole neighborhood is behind this thing as it stands, then fine, at town meeting, if there's a question and that neighborhood stands up and says, yes, this is what we want, this is what we support, it'll pass a town meeting. However, if there is some disagreement, or people don't really know what's going on, see all of this stuff and say, well, I'm not so sure about that. If you don't get real support from that community, then I don't think it's gonna pass town meeting. Because town meeting is gonna say, you know, I don't want that to happen in my area, why should I inflict it on someone else if they don't have the ability?
Well, that's, could happen with all of us. If we don't make a decision, it's not gonna get to town. It's my grave.
I understand.
So Ted, you, you had, you had blocked my view of where you pointed to. Roughly, roughly on there.
It's all the lots that are fronting.
So how far, all the way up to John Clef Lane?
All the way up to John Clef Lane.
John, yeah, but some of those lots that are fronting, the, the, you know, they're, they go back pretty deep. So, I mean.
Yours goes back deep. Most of them are pretty shallow.
Do the townhouse corner people know what's going on here?
Not the details like this. The townhouse corner people know that we're doing, that, you know, we're proposing this to misuse. It was definitely favorite, you know, they, they favored it. Um, they, you know, we, we all said that we wanted just basically. Be nice to the neighbors. You know what I mean? Just, you know, don't put anything in there that's too. But your job, what, but, but what's that mean? I don't think it, it, it entails. The amount of limitations on, on certain prop, uh, building materials that in today's day and age are so advanced and, you know, they look like.
That's always the problem. You get to the details and it begins to become kind of.
And that's where the decisions are made. It's in the details.
I, I, I understand, I mean, but.
Your house is all about details, you know? And, and that's, that's where everything make, everything succeeds or falls on the details. And that, this is where the hard stuff is.
And that's where I'm looking at town meeting, because this, as, as a warrant, it's gonna succeed or fall by the amount of support it's gonna get from town meeting. And if you can't, if the people in that area can't give it wholehearted support, I don't think it's gonna pass.
I agree, and my concern is that the people there believe they're gonna get a nice quaint little red, commercial area, and if they don't get that image, then it won't pass.
Right.
Well, why?
They'll be pretty upset.
Why are we, but we're not changing that.
I mean, we're not changing.
Why, I mean, we're not make, saying that it shouldn't be the quaint little, I'm just saying, I didn't.
Without, without the standards, you've got no leg to stand on to make somebody do that.
Right.
Somebody wants to come in and put a flat roof metal building, we don't have any ability to, to do anything about it without the standards in place.
It's already there. There's a flat, a flat building there.
But that, well, that really doesn't matter, but I'm just saying, it depend, like, it, it, I guess it depends on where it's gonna be.
If we need.
If it's set back, uh, my, okay.
You're gonna have a standard to do that. I can't negotiate. The problem with municipal versus private is that in municipal government, we are only, we only can operate within the limitations of our ordinance. I mean, we can bluff, and frankly speaking, this board bluffed, um, uh, the, what is it?
VIP.
VIP, yeah, you bluff, VIP.
VIP is a good one.
You bluff them. They had no reason, they, they could have put in their typical split face block building, flat roof building. You guys bluffed them. You made them feel like, well, you know, the, the process will go faster if we do the architectural things that they ask us to do. That's not gonna happen in most cases. Those guys are big. They realize they have an image to, to maintain, and that's why they, and they also have the resources to do that. You know, guys, you know, the, the problem is, once somebody decides to put in, you know, a, you know, like, T111 building with a flat roof. With no windows in it, and that's, doesn't match any of the architecture of the neighbors to the left and right, they're gonna lose support. They're gonna be, they're gonna feel like they've been betrayed. And I wanna make sure they don't feel that. I wanna make sure that what we get in there, we've got some standards, the minimum standards that the planning board can have some teeth to negotiate with. Cause without these standards, we can't, we can't dictate things. And when the neighbors come in at the public hearing and say, this looks like hell, we're upset with you. You, we're gonna say, oh, well, we didn't have those standards, so you couldn't do anything.
The other thing to consider is we, we don't allow any of, almost all of these uses are allowed now, but we will be allowing them, but it comes out of trade off. You know, and that, and it's just to make it fit in with what's there. So I, I don't see overall that these are being all that restrictive. Probably, most houses probably are built with a pitch roof anyways, and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with, uh, pitched roofs. I, like I said, I have a problem with somebody, uh, wanting to, you know, if they were gonna put some sort of mini, small manufacturing, like a, a woodchurn in place. Like I, my, you know, I have a friend who's got a wood shop, and it's a, you know, it's a metal building, it's on the back of his house, nobody, but he's got, he's got, it's gorgeous, but, I mean, I just, I, what I'm saying is, I'm, it's.
Maybe a solution would be just have it set back if, as long as it was whatever, 50 feet, 100 feet back.
If it's bucked, if it's set back. I mean, I, I mean, uh, flat roof, I don't like flat roofs. I don't know what, but I, 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 I can understand that, but I, like I said, I, I, I know a lot of beautiful metal buildings. I don't know why.
We're trying to create something there that, that is like Cape Porpoise. All you need is that one big flat metal building.
That's fine, or all the, all the stuff in Cape Porpoise that he's talking about is right on the sidewalk, right on the road. But when you get something, when you, when you have. But when you get something, when you, when you have this much property as this, when there's somebody setting back...
Maybe if we have it set back, that it...
I'm gonna provision that says the planning board may alter this, that the building is not facing the road, is not, is not visible.
Or is not visible from the road.
Not visible from the road. Does that work?
That, I know there could be a solution if we just...
There could be flexibility, that, you know, that also works from this standpoint, gives us negotiating room.
Right.
You know, if we can't see, if it's no impact, and we can't see it from back there, then we're not gonna worry about that. But if there is a potential for it, then we've got negotiating capability in that. So if we make it the planning board can, if we give ourselves that option, then we, we get the best of both worlds. So that might be the way to do it.
I think that's, that makes sense, if you, if it can be by planning board, whatever you said. How did you word that?
I don't know.
You got it?
I don't know, I have to watch the video.
It's time to pay.
So Ted, in this, item number six twenty-four four two, facade materials?
Yeah.
I would, I would recommend we strike that last sentence. I think there's a lot of ambiguity there.
Exactly.
And she told it together, I agree with you.
How do you deal with vinyl?
You allow that?
Why not? There's some vinyl that stinks.
Yeah, I know, but...
It's really low quality.
If I can't see it from the road anywhere...
Well, this ain't from the road.
You might see it from the road.
Right. You know what I'm saying.
I, I, it's so, it's so, it's, yeah, it, most of the times it's because people don't know how to put it on right. I, I mean, I got...
I'm not an expert in vinyl construction, but, you know, we've gotta, we've gotta pick our battles.
If they're gonna go vinyl, okay, you go vinyl, and if, if it doesn't last, then they get to replace it.
It wouldn't, well, it's not set up to take anything above vinyl. God, it's gonna be shaved, they're gonna use tack on vinyl.
Well, that's what I mean, they get to...
But saying high quality at least gives the planning board some, some ability to negotiate. All we're doing is trying to have negotiating capabilities.
Well, just, what, high-quality vinyl?
Yeah, that's why...
But are we going?
And you're telling them what they're...
Tell me, you know, tell me what you think. Tell me, tell me straight up.
Well, and that's what, I'm not, I guess I'm not an expert in vinyl. What I'm familiar with, with vinyl construction is what you see on ninety percent of the houses.
Yeah, single-family ones, yeah, which, which usually is fine. I'm not talking about the highest end, I'm not talking about, you know, overpriced vinyl. I'm talking about not the cheap stuff that you see on, you know, Franklin Motels that are an old merger.
It's probably smoke out the hall, D-Lo.
You know, the reason, I, I mean, I have apartment buildings, and, and it, there's, they're vinyl, and I have the vinyl decking, and I have the vinyl, you know, and the place looks gorgeous, and the thing about it is, it's looked gorgeous for the past ten years, and I haven't had to do a thing to it, and it's, you would, you would never know unless you went up and you tapped on it, what it was.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a good qual, that's a high-quality vinyl, you wouldn't know.
It's not the vinyl quality so much, it's the installation.
Well, it's the install, it's a, it is, it is, it, there are different qualities in vinyl.
Yeah.
It's, it's a quality of materials, it's, it's really issue quality of materials. If you have good quality materials, you know, you can make anything look great. It's, it, but it's when you use the cheap crap, and frankly speaking, that's when things gonna get deteriorated. And they deteriorate quickly, and...
Are we going to be, as a planning board, able to differentiate between high-quality and low-quality vinyl? When they come in front of us?
When they bring you cut samples?
Yeah.
Well, we don't need that.
Do we get cut samples of vinyl, or do we get an architectural detail that says?
I always ask for cut samples, because they do, they provide it to you. If you get, if you get a, if you get a bid, or you, you slip, they give you a cut sample.
It is getting complicated.
It does get complicated.
I just...
But I thought we were supposed to make this simple.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not...
Okay, let's move this along a little bit.
No, our objective is not to make it, the object, the, the primary objective is not to make it simple, the primary objective is to fulfill the objective, which is to get this as a commercial mixed-use area that fits in the existing care, that has a high quality, is gonna attract a lot of people, and be a gateway into Arundel. That's what we're trying to do, we're not trying to overdo it, we're trying to maintain, you know, minimum standard.
But the fact is, you're trying to, you aren't telling Harvey homeowner what he has to do, but you're only telling the businesses.
Unfortunately, because I don't have any authority over the homeowner.
Well, I mean, uh...
I don't, unless you're making a historic district, which you're not going to.
So to move this along, do we wanna keep that last sentence in there or not?
We'll take it out, I don't, it doesn't matter.
Well, you're gonna put in there that the, the planning board has discretion to...
Modify the, modify the, uh, the design standards for back building, or it...
Or modify the design standards area, why don't you just put it in there, and that'll protect you?
Uh, I know, that's dangerous.
Dangerous, okay.
It's really, it's not dangerous from that standpoint, it undermines the ordinance, and a judge will throw, you know, they'll throw it out. It says it's arbitrary deprecations. Yeah, it can't be arbitrary deprecations, so...
So what are we doing with that last sentence, guys?
Well, you're recommending pulling it.
That's what I meant, I mean, that was my recommendation on, I mean, I'm not a vinyl...
I'd say pulling it.
We don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion.
Okay, so...
Good boy.
Go on, okay.
This is a workout, it's a drag.
Okay.
The other thing that I had a question regarding, and it, did you, did this change from, did, did the lighting change from three-two to three-three?
Uh, no, I don't think so, lighting's the same.
Okay, so my...
Yeah, this lighting is the same.
No, oh, oh no, you changed it.
What's changed? Oh, did I put the whole thing in?
No, it was standing.
Lighting it, it almost came on.
You're speaking of lighting.
Should've talked about lighting earlier.
It was a revelation.
Okay, if you stand it out to a side, no lighting fixtures to exceed the height of, okay. I'm gonna use my property as a, for example. This was, used to be a restaurant with a very large parking lot. And, um, I would not, I mean, I'm, I'm not opening another restaurant dinner, but if somebody ever wanted to do that, um, I would think they would want lighting in there.
Yeah.
Now, fifteen feet's not real high, but I also understand that you don't want high lighting in this, I mean, this, this place, for instance, is set back in the woods and it's surrounded by trees. Can you do something like maybe lighting not to exceed tree limits, or something like that, so that it's not... But I'm just saying, fifteen feet is not, I mean, I got twenty feet in, in front of my building right now, and, and I'm thinking, that's parking lot lighting.
But the building height would be normally taller than fifteen feet.
Well, it says or less.
Yeah, this is always there as less.
Sorry, sorry, I misread that.
So, that's what, that, that would be, I'm just saying, uh, in that facility with that size parking lot, because it's a big size, it's a big block in the parking lot. Um, I didn't know if you could, like, like I said, I understand you don't want light so high that it's bumping beyond the trees, but...
The problem is that I'm gonna get standard lighting, which you're well aware of at, by this point. You know, it comes in fifteen-foot poles, comes in eighteen-foot poles, and comes in twenty-foot poles, and then comes in twenty-five, unless you wanna cut it.
Right.
Which you can.
Yeah.
You cut poles, I think.
No, we didn't.
Okay, no? All right, um, so those are the standards.
But then a lot of times you, yeah.
Right, so, but so the fifteen, to me, after just, and I, and I would never even have caught something like that without going through what I just did with lighting. I'm thinking, that's a whole five feet smaller than my smallest pole, because I got twenties and twenty-fives.
Right.
And...
Well, think of your twenty, think of your twenty footer down there.
Yeah?
Think of your twenty footer down there.
I'm thinking of my twenty footer, and I'm thinking of a parking lot, of a restaurant, and the size of that parking lot, how many light poles you'd have to put in there to actually have sufficient lighting, because you get less lighting as you go down.
Yeah, absolutely true, absolutely true.
Question's right, yes. You're pretty, but, about the lighting.
No, let me finish.
The question is, I mean, you know, the issue is, is a question of scale, that you wanna...
Right, and that's why I'm using my places as a, for example, because it's big.
I wouldn't wanna go fif, more than fifteen feet in front of a building. You wanna be able to...
I'm talking about the parking lot, I'm talking about safety of my entrance.
Go, think, think of what I'm thinking. You see where I'm going with this?
No. I get, you get, you get the, the view and the scale to the front, being smaller, but allow a...
More in the back.
Higher pole, maybe up to a twenty-foot pole in the back.
In the back, yeah.
Oh, because I was thinking, as Linda was talking, I was thinking, I was thinking twenty.
I mean, if, I mean, I'm looking at my property right now, it's, it's like, it, there's really no road frontage at all, and everything's in the back.
Right. And you think you were trying to, wanna be able to see where you're going in first.
Yeah, in the...
South of the pond.
That's one, um, south being the...
This one right here. So this is the frontage.
Okay.
And then this is, this is all parking area. I mean, it's a, it's a large parking area.
How, do you think the design standards would apply in that situation?
What do you mean?
Is it visible from the road?
Yeah.
No.
You have the exception in there.
We might have to, um, put a, a few more, they got, they got thinned out over here, I don't know who did that, but it's a little thin on the, on the, um, on the Senate Road side.
I do have the exemption, but that was applying the design standards, that wasn't applying the license.
So...
I could do that, I mean, we can say fifteen feet in the front and negotiable with the planning board up to twenty-five feet in the rear. We could do something like that.
Yeah, you're talking about...
What do you think about that? Jayden?
Yeah.
Twenty feet, twenty-five feet.
I would, I mean, for this scale, I think twenty would probably be a little, little lower key. I mean, twenty-five's a good size.
That's a big pole.
That's a big pole, that's your, that's typical commercial shopping center pole.
That's a hint of a pole, you say.
That's a hint, that's a big pole, but twenty feet is like a...
But twenty feet does give you the ability to get, get the light up a little bit more, shed, spread it out, maybe you reduce a pole or two, you know, a light or two.
But I'm, I'm looking at, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking that if you have your parking in your rear, then you should be allowed to do that. I like, I like a lighter, I like a smaller lighting in the front, just for scale.
Yep.
And most of the parking in this area is gonna be outside anyways.
Well, you have...
Ah, don't bother, I get cut off.
Oh, I'm gonna listen.
I've been cut off four times at least.
Tom, you have a comment?
No, I, I wasn't cut off. No, I'll say, I, I go either way on this, I think...
Yeah. I mean, I don't think, I don't think that's gonna make or break this zone, but it does give some flexibility.
Yeah, and I, I'd, I'd be, I'd be okay.
So you're gonna write that in?
Yeah, higher in the back.
Stone block in the front.
It's the, uh, I don't know, the only place that would require lighting, I think it would be like Sinclair's place that would, that would like, yeah, substantial lighting. I can't think of any of the other places that would require, um...
A lot of them are gonna use wall, you know, all fixtures.
Especially towards the, the front, any smaller, they'll try and get away with as much wall-mounted fixtures as possible.
Because they're cheaper?
Well, they're much, yeah.
Much cheaper.
And the landscaping, the one that I, I received didn't actually have the landscaping stuff on it, but now I see there's a bunch of landscaping stuff, so...
Yeah, we're doing some landscaping.
So, can, can you, can you sum that up in English?
Sure. That you, you can, you put in some street trees in front, and you put in parking lot, uh, planting strips um, along the sides of your parking lot, and I didn't even put in, because we don't, I didn't think we were gonna have large parking lots. I mean, we usually, we have that provision in seven-six, that if you have X number of parking spaces, you have to put, you know, trees in your medians. We have that existing.
Okay, so, when you say that, what is that?
What's it say?
I guess I'm confused, okay, let's use four potters as an example, that's a good-sized parking lot.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so what does that mean?
Well, if you go to section seven-six...
You wanna be shopping safe, uh, stop and shop.
In seven-six...
Shop, it's Shopper's Village, where you have to try to have all the barriers and everything else on there.
I would love to have the money in that bank account that they put into landscaping on that side.
Yeah, it was a waste.
Stop and shop?
Hennepin.
Hennepin.
Back to Bagel. They got mediums, they got...
Lot of buffering.
No, a huge amount of buffering.
The same thing as Shopper's Village. Used to be All Street parking lot, no, they had to put all the...
So that's the same thing, I mean, but...
Yeah, you got it right now, I'm just looking for All Street parking.
But is it, is it a certain size parking lot, shouldn't it be like...
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's based on the number of parking.
Okay, so, you don't have to do this if you have how many parking spots?
Well, that's what I'm going to, looking for.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Uh, let's see, here we go, when a parking, this is seven-six, C, three, C. Uh, and this is what, it basically is all parking lot, shopping landscaped along property bounds. Landscape area should be minimum fifteen feet wide, I, and then, uh, so, maybe where is it, it's where, oh, when a, when a lot is, no. Where the hell is that, no. Planning, planning, there should be landscaping to us, and the, when it's, a lot is where the system vegetation should, what the heck was that? Is that, that's not there. We're, oh, this page is missing.
What page do you need that?
Seventy-four. Is it seventy-four? Why is seventy-four missing?
You probably gave it to somebody.
No, it's ripped out. I'm just trying to find out where that thing is.
Yeah, seventy-four?
Three inches, stormwater, All Street parking, shh, 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 yeah, that's a reference to...
So, so the paragraph C refers back to seven-six and seven-eight?
Yeah. I was just was looking for the...
Russell?
Large parking, there it is, see, it's buried in the middle of the text, that's why I hate the large text standards. Large parking lots.
Well, what constitutes a large parking lot?
That was the big question.
Large parking lots. That's why the facial expression. Large parking lots shall provide two-inch DBH diameter breast height, uh, four feet, shade tree, one shade tree for twenty parking spaces, that's what it is. One shade tree for every twenty parking spaces, six trees per acre, located at representative points throughout the lot.
He's gay.
You hire a landscape architect, you tell you where they should be.
He's a higher landscape architect.
Represents highly face.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, um, no, yeah, I, I need something better than that, I can't, I can't voice that to anybody anymore. That's, I mean, I, right now...
In looking at these parcels, it'd be tough to envision any of them with a large parking lot.
Well, it's...
The only one, the only one big enough, I mean, I think mine is the biggest, I'm three acres.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean...
I'm the biggest.
Yeah, you're gonna have to do that.
Well, no, no, there's a building on it, but...
But your land size there is three acres.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, your parking lot's not just a acres.
Huh?
Your parking lot's not...
Well, no, 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 the whole piece of property is.
That's different.
I mean, I...
Parking lot's like a happening.
I can't envision any property in here that's gonna have a large parking lot.
Well, every twenty spaces.
Every twenty space, you gotta put a tree, so, I, I mean, there's at least twenty sp...
For large parking lots.
There's at least twenty spaces.
The way I heard you read that...
Every twenty, every twenty spaces.
But the way I heard you read that is for large parking lots, then...
I think a large parking lot is a parking lot that has twenty, twenty spaces. Because it's not defined, and, and that's the only other way to do it.
I know that that's, that parking lot fits twenty cars.
It doesn't, large parking lot, twenty spaces doesn't, it doesn't seem to me as a large parking.
Why would you use a term like "large" anyways? You know, in Arundel, twenty spaces is large.
True. Yeah.
When this was written, this was written in two thousand and seven.
Or modified.
Or it was modified, it was amended, so, I think this is pre-dated, this is probably written in two thousand and... Yeah, because this is an old standard. Well, let's start with a new standard for it. Just wish we had time. Uh, so anyways, yeah, it refers back to that. So that, that's, that's the standard we deal with, large parking lots, so...
So it's really, so that, that whole thing with planting trees and buffers and all that is not gonna really affect anybody unless they have a large parking lot?
No, it's going to affect that. Minimum five-foot planting strip, this is not that. Shall separate parking areas and driveways and parking lots and buildings. Set planting strips to landscape with one or the following vegetated ground cover, blah, blah, blah. Uh, plans for other parking in the Townhouse Corners shall conform with the standards of section seven-six and seven-eight disordnance, which is the stuff we just read. Side yard planting strips, ten-foot wide planting strip, meaning the buffering standards of section five-eight shall be installed on sideline, side lot lines unless... Side yard planting strips, ten-foot wide planting strip, being the buffering standards of section five-eight shall be installed on sideline, side lot lines unless accorded in the landscape plan between the properties is approved by the planning board, or the planning board deems set buffer strip to be unwarranted due to field conditions.
In other words, if there's already trees there, you might not say you have to put a landscape...
Yeah, and if there isn't, or there's not enough, and they'll say supplement it, so, you know, it, it gives discretion to the planning board on the side yards. It's basically gonna be buffering, how are you gonna buffer from your neighbor?
Right, how, how you gonna be next to your neighbor?
How you gonna be, it's a good name. It is. So... So, townhouse corner district, any other comments? John? Marty?
Anything else to be?
Um...
I'm all set with that.
Okay, um, I know it's running late, but there's one thing that we can probably get over pretty quickly. And that is, uh... Susan, do you guys have a chance to read that?
We have one.
It is, uh, ten of ten. Goes by fashion, having fun, huh?
Yeah, well, at least we're not, we're getting some, some stuff.
Yeah, can I ask what that is about? Why, why the change?
They're trying to capture prelude seasons, basically.
Wasn't there some restrictions on the, was it water or something, wasn't something being shut off? I mean, how are they gonna...
They still have to do that.
Yeah.
They still have to do that.
But they've got until December thirty-one.
December thirty-four, which will be interesting, because now they're gonna have to go deeper.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make, the engineering standpoint, they can't do that.
I'll make a motion to, to approve that, uh, change from October to December.
Can you read the whole thing?
Oh, is that the first step, is it going deeper, that means...
Where's the other part?
Is this the new one that you got tonight?
No, I, yeah, because they first stepped to making it year round, so now they've gone deeper, and they've already got everything all squared away for...
Did you read the rest of it?
No, just, yeah, that was just...
That makes it even better. Yeah, so I like that even better.
Yeah, we were talking about that all the fall today, and I said, cause he mentioned, I said, well, we don't wanna have kids in school, so...
Isn't that the issue, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
That's the issue.
It, it is, but...
No, they're not gonna go year round. They can't go year round, because then it's logic, it's not logic anymore, it's not a logic facility.
Four months to go.
Four months to go. You're right, why did they do that, do that lead that...
We just went from, yeah, six to four.
The reason, six to, yeah, six to eight, why? Cause their marketing study said that the, the target market group, um, wants to go to Prayu. They like to go there to Prayu, they like to be here at Christmas, they'll probably have a problem kicking people out on New Year's Day.
Guarantee you, huh?
They're gonna have a hard time kicking people out on New Year's Day, but it's, uh, that's...
That's the water off.
That'll do it. But, uh, that's what they, that was a request...
Well, speaking of enforcement, who is gonna be responsible for shutting the water off?
Yeah. See, if it's in the covenants, it's conditional use in the covenants, I know covenants can be changed, but covenants can't be changed without the planning board's approval.
But I'm just saying, how do you enforce that?
Well...
I, I'd be just like how you shut, have them shut the bus engines off, how do you enforce that?
Sometime in January, it's, you have to drive through. Make sure there's no lights on.
Uh, how do I enforce it? How do I enforce anything?
No, I said, how?
I have one, one guy.
The code enforcement officer.
The code enforcement officer drives up there and sees if there's any cars there. Is he gonna do that? Probably not.
On January second, he'll...
January second, he's not gonna be very busy, you're right, on January second, he's... Just for the heck of it, you know, just for the fun of it, cause they won't keep it plowed, they have to keep it plowed.
For fire reasons.
For fire reasons. I would not do, I mean, why would you spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a vacation home and not, and not provide fire security? Absolutely.
Um, I would genericify the R S U twenty-one, I understand the intent, but I would say be publicly...
Just put school system?
Public, yeah, be enrolled in the public school system.
Are you...
In the event that you're not...
Public or private? No, but I, right now, we, we tuition students to Thornton Academy.
That's true.
The R S U number...
That's very important, thank you, that's...
And we might not stay in R S U twenty-one.
So how, how would it say without exempting all schools?
We're just being enrolled in, in...
In the schools.
In the Rundle public school system?
Yeah, Rundle public school system, I mean, that...
Yeah, but the other thing is you got homeschool.
So, so what if they're homeschool, I don't care.
Actually, that is a point, because we do pay for homeschool. That comes out of our pocket, homeschool, there's a tuition involved in that, so...
Right, yeah.
The parents get some of that, because for materials and stuff like that.
We have to get materials and books and stuff, there's a whole, there's a whole homeschool system, you just can't figure it out as you go along.
There's an expense involved.
Well...
So take out public, a Rundle school system, whether it's home school, public school, private school, would it be generic?
Yeah.
A Rundle school system. Would that work?
Enrolled or supported.
There you go.
By...
See, everything can be worked out.
The Rundle schools, public school system.
You gotta find the right words.
More words.
By public.
A Rundle school system?
Yeah.
Do we have a school system? We don't really have a school system.
We're part of a school system.
Yeah, we're part of a school system.
And you're just saying part, you know?
Right.
I think your judge will understand it.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, and...
Thank you.
Hi. We got to it, didn't we?
I know, thank you, I appreciate it, do you wanna come back next week?
And it was before midnight.
It was before midnight.
We have a good one.
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll repeat my motion to, uh, accept with those changes, the date and the revised language during the school system. That's my motion. Second. All in favor of that motion?
Yep.
Who opposed it?
Now, do we have to make a motion to send this to the warrant, to the void settlement for inclusion on the warrant?
No, cause we gotta do public hearings.
We gotta do hearings next Thursday.
We gotta do public hearings on this thing, too.
So after the public hearing, should do the motions?
Yeah. You know, all right, I'm, you know, I know you guys wanna blow out here, but very honestly, if you look at that, my email to you, which was very succinct, uh, basically said, or not email, conditional use standards to be developed, add some order on this, those I've gotta do to include in the warrants, and I don't know when we're gonna have time to review them, or frankly, when I'm gonna have time to write them.
They should work out within...
I will be working on it. And I'm gonna bill time for it, too.
Assistant town manager over there.
And I'm gonna take, save the time, take it out of Ann's pay.
He'll get it done, don't worry, I have faith in you, Josh.
You're gonna be typing all this for me?
I won't.
I'll dictate it and you type it.
Oh, really? Don't we have?
No, we don't have standards.
For none of these?
We have definitions.
We don't have standards, we have definitions, but we don't have standards. So there's one or two things that's gonna happen here, we're gonna fake it, you know, when somebody comes with a, which is, now we're gonna have to do it, gentlemen.
I, I don't see a problem with that, uh, just to get it in, we have to, we have to get it in, but, uh, it won't affect the vote, whether it's, whether it's a standard or...
No, it'll affect whether, how effective we are in actually enforcing the intent.
So, so, do these, do the standards have to be adopted at town meeting? I guess any ordinance does, yeah.
Yeah.
Have that ready for the next time.
What it still have to do is I still have to go through and eliminate, I have to, I have to cite every single deletion that I've gotta do, I've gotta go through all the performance standards and set all the deletions of all the references to the H C, and the D B, and the C C S district, I'm not getting rid of, um, and I have to put in, substitute it with the other districts, and then I have to make out, out any references that are in conflict with what we're saying in this, make sure that one section of the ordinance does not basically, um, conflict with the other sections.
How much time you got?
Uh, not enough.
How can you?
I don't have enough time.
Two weeks, three weeks?
Basically, we can go all the way up, we, we're gonna have to have a public hearing in May, so is the compliance committee, they just found out, they have thirty-day notification before their public hearing, their public hearing is not gonna occur until, by the second week of May, ours is probably gonna be in the second week of May, and I, we've got fourteen, I've got thirteen days, and I have to notify every single property owner in the D B one and D B two districts.
If you create a new use, conditional use without a standard in place, what if this passes at town meeting in, you know, July fifth, you get a takeout restaurant application, how do you approve it or disapprove it?
We, we, we work with the existing conditional use ordinance, that's all we work with. Which has standards on, on impacts.
Or you find a closest use? Like if you don't have one?
Uh, it would be closest use, because remember, this thing's going in, and we don't have omitted uses. So, we, you know...
So you could do it?
Possible. But, well, you know, it's gonna be a situation where we're gonna have to be very judicious, and by then, we'll probably have the conditional uses, we could go to November, or we could just wait until the following, you know, until following June, when the whole ordinance goes in front, in front of people. This is gonna be Frankenstein. You know, I wasn't kidding when I said Frankenstein, if you saw, saw, see the numbers, eight-twenty-one, eight-twenty-one is in the performance standards section, the chart, which I also have to do, is gonna eliminate three, uh, two districts, and it's gonna say, the big column is gonna say, C, section, you know, eight-twenty-one, for all of the standards.
So, so as long as we would be legally covered, if somebody, as Ann's example, came in with a drive-through facility, and we had something to fall back on, to where we didn't just sit there with our, you know, hands up in the air and say, well, I guess we don't have any, so, we can't enforce any.
No, we've got standards in terms of impacts, we've got those, the nine standards that we go with.
Right.
Drive-through facilities, I will give you drive-through facilities, I'll tell you very honestly, I'm gonna lift them, I, I wrote some for a location, I'm gonna lift them directly from that.
And probably a lot of these you can find in various...
I am going to lift some of these from, from various, various ordinances I've written before other people, it won't be original for us, so if it looks familiar to S A C, or it looks familiar to, you know, guys don't get whatever ordinances, but, um, uh, you know...
Gotta work.
Be aware that I, I took it from...
As long as we have something to fall back on.
It can be minimal, I mean, as long as it's...
You gotta add to the list.
Right.
The information center.
The information center's on that list, too. And that one, I think I'm gonna have to do something with, because that's so, that's such a wild card, um, I, I'm gonna have to concentrate on that, probably drive-through facilities, because that's really queuing issues, um, and info center, I'm not worried about...
You said that was very forty by the state?
Well, yeah, it's, it, there's not much there, non-motorized recreational vehicles, facilities are gonna write something, no, I don't have to, I just have to define that. Golf course, I'll let, like, I don't have to worry about a golf course right now, I think we can do that.
We've got one in town, we must have something.
We have nothing for it.
Taverns we have, right, then we do something.
No, we don't have anything.
We're doing it for families, but I don't...
We used restaurant.
We did the definitions, understanding.
Yeah, that's right, you're right.
We still have to do taverns, because, you know, there, there are still issues on taverns, and we wanna make sure, I mean, we're, we're gonna have more taverns at some point, we, we wanna be able, we have standards on this, but, uh, right now, I'm gonna be less concerned about doing taverns, besides, I think we're gonna get some pushback, you know, some, some of that stuff. So... Takeout restaurants. Takeout restaurants really deals with parking circulation more than anything else, really. That's, you know, places that don't have any seating, internal seating, interior seating.
What about vendors?
Vendors, we have nothing. We still don't have a standard for vendors.
Why I'm asking is, this is gonna be like tours, okay, like your visitor center, or something, another, you got the guy who has the hot dog stand, or anything else. That's why I'm asking.
Would that be, would that be dealt with in the zoning ordinance, or a separate town ordinance that allows...
We went through this once before, we went through this once before about a guy having the hot dog stand at, um...
Route one.
The route one, you know, two spots have route one, turn on the one that, uh, next to where Rainbow Market was, and then there was another one down next to where, uh, the garage, the, but he was alongside the road, I mean, uh...
Well, you know, the vendors, the vendor issue, it came up once, when Stephanie did hers, but she didn't do it in, she didn't do it here, she did it over in Kennebunk, when she did her van, um, the selectman approached me and said, do you have anything, I mean, what, what are your standards of this, and I said, I have no standards, I have no authority through the zoning ordinance to prohibit it, cause we don't have omitted uses, so I don't have any authority, and I have no standards, and the code enforcement officer concurred with that, and so she only had to deal with selectmen on that issue. But, so it's a hole, it's a hole right now, because we don't have omitted uses, we don't have standards, as Mari points out, for vendors, the only authority that the town would have is if somebody's in the town right of there, then we do have an authority, but if I were a restaurant, I'd be very upset about it.
Well, we had, it was approval for the little Chinese guy or whatever else that, to have his hot dog stand, uh, at Free Market.
I don't know where that was under.
He was down on route one, down by where, wasn't he where the...
I don't care where it was, tell me what, who had the authority.
We can find it in a minute.
Okay, it was the planning board did it, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Was it two years ago?
Jimmy Pack.
That's the guy who shot...
Jimmy Pack? It was Jimmy Pack?
Yes.
Okay.
Wow. Was it a couple, three years ago?
No.
Who?
It was probably four or five years ago, I would say, at least five years ago.
Jimmy Pack came in and saw me about this issue, I think in the first, first couple of months I was here, that's what I...
Oh, it was later than that.
But what I'm saying is that, that's when I talked to him, and he was thinking about redoing it.
As you tell, he was not in Rainbow Markets, this was before the brothers, the Rainbow Market was still there.
I thought he was further up, nobody RVs.
No, 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 that was the other one.
Well, I thought I would just warn you guys about this, because I'm not sure how much I can get done, cause I still have to clean up the, I have to do all the warrant stuff, and still make all the changes you wanna make, I will give you stuff by next week, I still have to do your packets for, you know, for, uh, for Thursday, I won't get them out until Monday, I'll have Jim deliver them Monday. We have, uh, Sightwalk next week? Sightwalk next week, two sites.
Two of them.
Two of them?
It's gonna be hard for me to get there next week.
What do we have, we have, I thought we had...
We have, we have Kates?
Yes.
We have Kates, that's it. So we only have Kates.
You sure? I was thinking two as well.
Yeah, do something else.
But I'm trying to think who else we got.
Our last meeting was five, nine-seven?
I thought there was something else on your tab. What we, what we have on the agenda is gonna be the...
Public hearing.
We have two public hearings.
Maybe it was two public hearings.
We have two public hearings. Two public hearings, and so we have Southern Maine, and we've got, um...
You have Sightwalk for Kate's Butter at six P M.
Right.
Okay.
And then we, and then we've got, um...
That's right, now, cause we were talking about that, and if, whether we should do it at six, or later, or earlier, I mean, it's...
Aside, because of the distance.
Just the one.
So we got those, and then we've got, um, uh, One Steel, or Aim, as they're calling now, they're, they're coming back, and then we also have People Love Joy, who's submitting a subdivision, that'll be a sketch, but...
We have a public hearing also for Southern Maine Marine, Southern Maine Marine, their boys are in public hearings, Kate's Butter is the Sightwalk.
Okay, do we want to have another meeting, another workshop meeting, have to?
You have to approve what I've done, unless you wanna just give me a blanket approval now. No. John, you wanna, you wanna trust me with those design standards?
Next week is the ten, so it'll be the seventeen.
So can we put it on the agenda, and if it...
I can put it on the agenda, the ten.
Does it get heard? Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna put it on the agenda at every meeting we have.
Right.
And if it doesn't get heard, we just...
We have a special, well, we have a special meeting to discuss.
Cause we, you know, we, at some point, you guys have to, have to codify it, and say, okay, we go, and then I have to start doing more, or, we're called to get in the public hearing.
Except with the, the standards, uh, I think most of the districts are all made to go.
Well, I'm gonna have to take a, the hard look at our D B stuff, cause I think we're missing some stuff in the D B two, with standards, but I'll take another look, I thought we did more on that, cause we had a lot of discussion, we decided we weren't gonna have design standards, right, remember that? I thought we did more on that, cause we had a lot of discussions, we decided we weren't gonna have design standards, right, remember that?
D B two?
Yeah. Do you guys remember that? We're gonna have design standards. Uh, we're gonna have the same parking landscape standards we're gonna have for, uh, D B one, but we aren't gonna have any of that. We are gonna have architectural design standards. And the only thing I'm questioning, I'll, I'll look through my notes, is signage. We're not gonna do D B one signage, because that's more restricted than what we wanted to. If we, mind, we just woke them up. So.
I'm pretty sure we didn't do signage.
I'm pretty sure we didn't either, so that could be refined. And if we have to use the same signage as we have now, we'll have to use that, but that's, that's gonna be tough one. Okay.